Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, December 18th, 2024, and this is the regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council, now called to order in council chambers at 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Jeremy Grimm, presiding, Alto President or Council President Deb Rule, Counselor Joe Spiro, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette, and Rick Howarth. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility, as the presiding officer, I'm to identify law enforcement personnel serving as Sergeant at Arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Kuhn in the back in full regatta. Pledge of Allegiance of Peace. Everyone would stand will recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed, I need to report that this evening's agenda was amended after its original posting. The First Amendment added item 11, where I'm seeking council confirmation of my appointment of Holly Ellis as Public Works Director. That announcement was made and the agenda was reposted more than 48 hours prior to the meeting. Therefore, council approval is not required for that amendment. However, the agenda was reamendized earlier today to make an adjustment to item seven. Staff still seeks authorization to apply for an Idaho Parks and Rec Waterway Improvement Fund grant, but instead of a project to undertake improvements that would enable low-water mortgage and year-round use of the boat launch, at this time, staff has planned to erect these particular funds, if awarded, to parking and dock improvements, which Jason will explain during his presentation and as reflected with the updated resolution uploaded in the packet this afternoon. Pursuant to Idaho Code, Section 74204-4B, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda, reamended and posted today, making a change to the resolution that is proposed under item seven.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Rule, second by a Spiro. This is a roll call vote.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The amended agenda has been approved. As reflected on the agenda, our order of business this evening is a little bit different, and I'd like to begin with the public comment portion of the meeting. If you wish to speak and haven't yet completed a sign-up form, please do so and hand it to the staff member at the back of the room. If you'd like to speak on any item, including on this evening's agenda, now is your opportunity to do so. For purposes of general public forum, you're also welcome to comment on any topic pertinent to the business of the city that is not included on the agenda. Those attending remotely who wish to speak may raise their hand on Zoom at this time. I would like to make everyone aware that the city does have public policy on meeting decorum. The rules are posted in the chambers at the entrance doors. In summary, I would ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful, not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be disorderly and disruptive, no calling out, clapping, or holding up signs, et cetera. Please note that the council cannot take testimony on any planning-related matter outside of an official public hearing. Public comment time is for comments only, no questions or debate. You're welcome to contact me during regular business hours if you have questions or concerns. Again, this is your opportunity to speak on the consent calendar or older new business items on the agenda or on any topic relevant to business of the city. This is the only public comment time that will be offered this evening. The appeal hearing on tonight's agenda is not a public hearing. Any witnesses who will be speaking will be called by the appellant during the hearing. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside in the city of Sandpoint Limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. With that, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the public comment period?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of anyone who wishes to speak during general public comment in the room, and no hands are raised on Zoom, so I do not believe we have anyone who wishes to speak.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll give it another few seconds. Thank you, and that will conclude the public comment portion of this evening's meeting. Next announcements and reports. We were received with the general announcements and reports. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Amelia Boyd and John Hastings for their service over the past several years and their terms on the Planning and Zoning Commission as they come to a close. Additionally, council members, this is our last meeting of 2024, and I just want to thank you all for your support and encouragement and celebrate what we have accomplished this year. High rung, top of the list. The city is operating today in absence of a approximately $150,000 a year city administrator. We have initiated our fairly far along on our wastewater treatment plant preliminary engineering study. We adopted the comp plan. We decoupled from Selkirk Fire, successfully opened the James E. Russell Sports Facility Center. The city is fully staffed for the first time in many years, with the exception of a police officer that just moved on. And in general, I just want to thank you again, and I'm very much looking forward to the challenges and successes that we're going to have in the new year. With that, do council members have any announcements or reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do.
Council President Rule.
The pedestrian bicycle advisory committee met on December 12th, and we addressed some old unfinished business with formation of subcommittees for the Cedar Street Multimodal Transportation Master Plan. We also formed the Event Planning Subcommittee that would be in charge of an event that would engage the public to get more input for different pedestrian types of activities within the town. There was also Multimodal Development Review Committee, excuse me, lots of ums tonight, and Multimodal Intersection Design Subcommittee was also formed. And as far as new business, the committee discussed how to develop a review subcommittee in monitoring upcoming projects and developments within the city and how they could be most helpful in the frame of timelines when permits are coming in and such. There was also a brief discussion on a review checklist for different developments and how the committee could be helpful on that level. And then finally, Mr. Mayor, we discussed methods of public notification for open house events, and I volunteered to speak with you regarding our process and if we have a developed process and how we can make that process in and of itself a stronger process to get out there. So I look forward to that discussion. And that's it.
Thank you, Council President Rule. Any other council announcements or reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. It's a little raspy, but yeah, we had our Parks and Rec Commission meeting. We talked about 2025 capital improvement plans, discussed different grant opportunities for Parks and Rec. Short meeting, a lot of good people. We look forward to what the future is for Parks and Rec, so nothing too crazy.
Thank you, Councilman Spiro. Any other council reports or announcements? Hearing none. I'll now use the floor to staff for some quick reports from the departments. Cheryl Hughes, Central Services Director is on her way up.
Good evening. Just a few things to go over that's happening in Central Services. On the contract side, I am going to be bringing forward soon, in January, I'm hoping, the, a new communication site lease for Bald Mountain for Vista. They had expanded into a larger parcel up at Baldy Mountain, and they finished construction in late fall. So we're going to be bringing forward the lease agreement for that new site. The old towers that are on their existing site that they were in, they are planning on giving those to the city where we can then sublease them out as we see fit. However, there is a public television entity that's interested in leasing some tower space. So we hope that that all comes to fruition soon. So hopefully, we bring that to you in January. We're also currently working with the Marcia Snack Shack lessy from last season that would like to continue this next season. So we're in negotiations with them, and they are very excited about going back in. And the lease that we drafted allowed us to negotiate and have them for another two one-year seasons, as long as we can all come into an agreement. So that'll be coming your way in the near future as well. And they are, they had a very successful first season, and they learned a lot. So what they learned, they're looking forward to implementing within the second season. A public announcement that City Hall will be closing at 12 noon on Christmas Eve to the public. So there, yeah, 12 noon on Christmas Eve, City Hall is closing. And for special events, the Polar Plunge is still in permitting approval process, but it is tentatively set for January 1st at 11:00 AM at City Beach. So that's all you have. Is there any questions from council?
Council members, any question for Central Services Director Hughes?
Thank you very much, and to you all, very happy holidays as well.
Same to you. Any other staff reports at this time? Chief of Police, and let the record show that Councilman Dick has joined the meeting in person.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to give you a quick update that on some of the training activities and some of the stuff the officers have been doing over the last, oh, we'll say month and a half. First off, if you're not tied into Facebook, Officer Jeremy Reson, he's recently graduated from post. To kind of give you a little background, so when someone gets hired, they spend about 18 18 weeks in our FTO program, give or take. So four and a half months after that, we get him signed up to post. They go to Meridian. They spend another 14 weeks in training just to become certified with their basic certificate. So he's passed his classes. He's graduated. He's been sworn in. He had a whole day off. He had Saturday off, back to work on Sunday. And so we're excited to have him through that almost a year program, just to get him to that level. We teased that it takes about three to five years to get an officer up to like normal, or what we classify as trained and ready to go. So he's well, well on his way. With that, some of the other training we do still in law enforcement, we're tasked with some high liability training. And so we spend a lot of time training our officers. We've done a better job if we have instructors that can train our officers, and we don't have to send them out or away to training. And so just kind of some of the things that we've done with our high liability for us. So Officer Kingery, he's been to instructor class. To go to instructor class, you got to have three years in law enforcement. You got to be approved. You got to meet some certain qualifications, and then either go to a 40 or an 80-hour course to be certified. So Officer Kingery is now certified as our TASER instructor. He does all of our spike strips deployments. He also just got certified on less lethal. So any of like the ammunition, or munitions, so like bean bags and those type of things that we do utilize. Officer Little, Officer White, just went to the instructor course. And so we're looking at getting them certified as instructors in a couple different categories. One will be our crowd control, which will be Officer Little, EVAC for our vehicles. We're required by the state of Idaho to accomplish so many hours of training every year in our high liabilities. And so he'll go for those two. Officer Haxton just quit, retired, whatever. He technically retired by standards. Went to the school district. He left a void for our ARCON instructor. ARCON does everything with our self-defense, ground fighting, handcuffing, weapons retention, which is an 80-hour course plus the time to get through. So the good thing is, is Officer White, we just hired back. He's going to be able to go to that training and become certified to come back and start teaching the officers in that. Sergeant Ziegler just went to TAC Med School, so he's now going to be an instructor for TAC Med. He'll be able to come back, and if someone's wounded, he's able to teach us how to pack wounds, put on tourniquets, and do that, do some life-saving measures while we get him transported to the hospital. And then Corporal Flanagan just went back and got certified for our use-of-force instructor. So all these high liability areas that we have to make sure that we're protected, that we're covered, that we have the training to keep our liabilities as a city down for our small department, we continue to work at, to improve on, and to help our officers excel, which is fantastic. On top of that, the last two weeks, I've had the opportunity, after I spoke, to go out into another youth group, and we did some self-defense with one of our youth groups that's going to the Philippines. So they're going on a little mission trip to the Philippines. They invited me out. We spent hour and a half with them last week. We spent another hour and a half today with them doing some self-defense techniques. Absolutely fantastic. They invited us out. Hopefully, they had a good time to doing it. So there's kind of some, some training rundowns on behalf of the police department. I did put out, again, a secondary notice on our Facebook page today, just to remind the public, everybody's aware that it snowed. Plows are out. It's the time of warnings are diminishing, and citations are going to start to happen. So if you're parked on the wrong side of the street, I've received a couple of text messages in the last week. If we will issue citations for that, and the answer is yes. If you violate the parking ordinance, you can be issued a citation, and you probably will. If your vehicle's left, and it's been, even though it's on the correct side of the street, if you're bermed up and you haven't moved, you'll be tagged and towed and billed for that, too. So just because you may be parked on the correct side, once you see a berm starting to move your vehicle, let the city crew come in, clean that space up, and then move back. So if anybody has questions, I put my email address on our Facebook page. They can go ahead and get ahold of me. Questions?
Thanks, Chief Kuhn. Are there questions from the council for the chief?
Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
I was wondering about the sign for no trucks getting off of 95. Did we put that up, or was that ITD that put that little red?
The box ones?
Yeah.
I know. We posted the ones in the city. I'm not sure if we did the one.
I believe we did. I think we did that, right, Holly? Yeah.
Can we put one at their earlier sign also? That kind of creeps up on you. I almost didn't see it myself, and I was looking for it. It's right at the exit. But you know the green sign before that shares don't get off here, and this is, I'm just wondering if we could put one there as well?
I can make that recommendation.
Okay. I just think that it'd help. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
I just want to thank Police Chief Kuhn for coming to the school. I got some feedback this afternoon that they loved both of the sessions. A few of them felt a little overwhelmed by you, but I think that was good and intentional. But again, thank you for committing to serve our community and especially the youth of the community.
No, it was, it was a fantastic. My personality sometimes can be a little overwhelming, and they tolerated me, which is good.
Other questions for Chief Kuhn? Chief, I have just one. I believe we've got a grant for enhanced enforcement. Are we doing any kind of enhanced during the holiday period, holiday parties, and DWI-type stuff, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Was that bad, sir? No, no, not at all. I don't remember our dates exactly, but we do do, we do get that grant that goes throughout the year. We target different times of the zone, Christmas, New Year's, and then throughout the summer, we do target. So we do have some overtime grants. We do put those out for targeted patrols.
Thanks. Sorry for spilling the beans of.
No, that's okay. No, it's no secret. If anybody wants to know, I'll put it on our Facebook page. If we get people to be compliant and get sober drivers to take them home, that is ultimately the goal, so.
Good. Thank you. Thanks, Chief. And Holly Ellis, representing Public Works.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Just a couple updates from Public Works. Our catch basins, so we did have some ice on our streets. So our street crews have been out. Past two weeks, they've been clearing leaves from catch basins, and now it's ice. So they're out today. They'll be out this week, opening those up and making sure that they're draining. We have two capital projects going on, one at City Beach for our lift station, and then the Bridge Street Pier Rehab is underway at the bridge over Sand Creek. And an update from the wastewater treatment plant, we have a special meeting, January 8th, to council. You'll get an update on where the wastewater treatment plant PER is, as well as requests to submit a letter of interest to the state that would position us for SRF funding from the state as well.
Thanks, Holly. Any questions for Holly at this point? Awesome. Thanks, Holly. All right. Next, council, here an appeal on, oh, sorry, Council or Director Welker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One more update for you tonight from Community Planning and Development.
Yeah.
Lots of news. Been a big week. No, I'm not going to keep, I'm going to keep it short tonight. The, the big news, of course, is that the James E. Russell Sports Center opened for public play on Monday at 7:00 AM with the community court time from 7:00 to 8:30. I stopped by at 8:00 on my way into work that morning, and there were a handful of players there playing for free during the community court time, and many, many more showing up for the 8:30 group pickleball play, which saw 26 people show up for. So our first open play time for pickleball had 26 members, and I think eight courts were handed over to pickleball during that time, eight pickleball courts, which was pretty awesome. Update as of 4:00 PM this afternoon, we've now sold 119 memberships, up slightly from the 17 we had sold last time I talked to you. Forty-one of those are annual members, 78 are monthly members, 14 are youth members, and 105 adults. The, the facility has brought in $15,770 of revenue through memberships and daily play fees in the first three days, and we've had 114 unique visitors since we opened at 7:00 AM on Monday morning. Thirteen of those have been youth. So so far, we're seeing, we're kind of getting a feeling after three days, what the, what the use is going to be like, and it's pretty consistent. I've stopped, and I was the 104th member when I signed up on Tuesday, and I've gotten the chance to get one round of tennis in and a little bit of pickleball as well yesterday before the planning and zoning meeting. So it's been cool to be over there. It's a good vibe. I encourage you to stop by. Unfortunately, the one thing we're not allowing right now is the public walking, and that's simply because we don't have the curtains in, and it's not safe to have people walking without those separation curtains. There's too many balls flying around. Those are expected to arrive late December and be installed in early January, and then we'll be open for 10 hours a day of free public walking for anybody. Daniel, the supervisor, facility supervisor, is getting lots of feedback on the facility schedule and fees. One proposal that we are exploring, which would, would come in a updated fee, is the possibility of adding like a super user membership fee. We've actually seen quite a few people who say they're going to use it 20, 25 times a month. These are people who are, some, some of them are coming to both pickleball open play sessions each day, and we understand that for, for a user that uses it more than 15 or 20 times a month, having the ability to pay a single monthly fee and then not pay each time you go would be beneficial to them. In other words, kind of replicating what some other private clubs offer. So, so listening to the feedback from those kind of super users, we are exploring the option of adding an additional optional monthly membership fee. That wouldn't be in addition to your regular monthly membership fee. You could just pay that and then not have to pay each time you go, because we do want to listen to that feedback and provide opportunities to make it affordable for those people who are going to use it the most. That's it for the sports center. Also, Traverse Park, the playground, we had a couple weeks of wonderful weather, so the playground installers finished their work. And then right as, actually today, the concrete was expected to be poured for the splash pad, but that's now been delayed because we're back in snow and slush. So the, the concrete is now delayed to the 26th is the next time we can get the concrete truck there. And according to me, we're still expecting to open the playground before the new year, but it's kind of weather dependent at this point. You just can't pour concrete when there's slush and snow on the ground. So they are working hard over there, and it's, it's, it's open during the day for, for anybody who wants to poke their head in. It's not open for play just yet. Something that we're working on in the Rec Division right now is a plan for lifeguards. I know there's a lot of interest in this in the community. Katie Bradbury has been working with the HR Generalist, our HR guy, Kyle. I'm getting lifeguard job descriptions up by the, by early 2025. We think in January, we're going to have those job descriptions up. We want to have a feeling of how many lifeguard applicants we're going to get. We've kind of set the, the goal of 12. 12 would allow us to operate seven days a week. If we only got six, we could operate for three days a week. And there's, there's kind of a backup plan for Friday, Saturday, Sunday lifeguard operation at City Beach. Less than six, it's not going to be a viable program. So we're going to start recruiting early this year and hopefully get those lifeguards the training they need in the spring so that we can have a solid lifeguard program again after a couple summers without one. Also in recreation, we've got our winter non-school day camps start next Monday. There are still spaces available. It's $40 for a day of play. We're basing that out of the sports center. Now they're going to have a chance to use the courts. They've got the, the community room there with big screen TVs and all sorts of games and activities that Katie and her camp counselors are going to organize. There are scholarships available. We awarded one today. It's a great opportunity for parents who, who need a little extra help during the holiday when two parents are working or single parents who have to go to work need that extra support. So that that's open for kids age six and up, up to 12, I believe. And that's it. That's it for me.
Any questions for Director Welker?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Duquette, you're recognized.
I want to thank you first off for listening to the public and getting the lifeguard program working or trying. And then I have a question about the lights on the Russell Building. I have not been down there at night, but I've heard comment about pretty bright. Do they go off at a certain time, or are they on all night?
Yeah, the facility closes at 8:00, and Daniel's been turning them off when he leaves. I drove by at 8:15 last night, and they were off. The only lights that remain on are the down-facing lights underneath the canopy, and then the illuminated lights along the walkway. So they should be off every night by 8:30 at the latest, and if not, they're on a backup timer that automatically shuts them off at 10:00 PM, which is when we turn off all the park lights.
All right. I will share that. Thank you.
Yeah. Welcome. Okay.
Councilman, I mean, Director Welker, do you happen to know what the minimum age for lifeguard is?
I don't, I don't happen to know that. I'm guessing for head lifeguard is going to be a little older, but I'm guessing 15-year-olds, 14-year-olds can probably work as lifeguards.
Okay.
But I don't know. Yeah.
Thank you so much. We'll see you in a little bit.
Thanks.
All right. I think that's, Chief, Fire Chief, Gavin, you good? He's good. No fires. Excellent. Next, council will hear an appeal on city staff's decision to deny water service to the proposed McGee subdivision development in the city of Ponderay, and I will now invite the appellant and their representatives to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the pleasure to be here. My name is Norm Semanko. I'm an attorney with Parsons Bailey and Latimer. I'm a proud graduate of Spirit Lake Elementary. I just crossed the border from Warner County and also Lakeland High School. I practice throughout Idaho and Eastern Washington. My primary mission is water, and I serve a lot of irrigation districts, including a number in Cootney County and in this county. But my side hustle is planning zoning matters and coming before counties and cities, as the mayor is aware. So, and I enjoy that. And I'm here today on behalf of McGee Development. And honestly, this is not something that they should have to have a lawyer involved, but I think out of frustration, I know out of frustration, they enlisted me and asked if I could try to help move the process forward, which we're definitely doing here. I have to say that your staff and your city attorneys have been very cooperative, and we appreciate their help in getting this matter before you tonight. This is not a court. We're not expecting this to be treated like a court proceeding. It's a simple matter, in my view, of this proposed development, wanting to move forward with water service in whatever form that ends up taking. And it was clear to me when, when I was asked by McGee Development to be involved in this, that there is modeling that needs to be done, that should have been done, needs to be done, and we're prepared to move forward with the staff to, to make sure that that modeling gets done to determine how best to provide sufficient fire flows for this particular project. So tonight, you're going to hear from, I'm not going to talk for a long time, you're going to hear from McGee Development, and you're also going to hear from the project manager, Scott McNee. And what you're going to hear from the developer, the applicant, the protestant, the appellant, whatever you want to call, call them, the folks, is the timeline of what they've gone through over the last year and a half, attempting to work with staff. And I think we've kind of got cattywampus on the process here, and we're hopeful tonight that you'll be able to see the situation that we're confronting, and hopeful that you can provide some direction to staff to work with, with my client to get through the modeling and hopefully get to a solution on this process. We believe the decision letter that came out, frankly, it didn't come out until I got involved, and I started pushing and prodding, when, when are we going to get the modeling done? When are we going to get a decision? And we got a decision letter that I would say at best is premature. The modeling that needs to be done was not done, and you're going to, you're going to hear about that in particular from Scott McNee. What I will share with you is I spent five years on a city council in Eagle and two years as city council president, and I hated these nights because you had staff ideas coming forward, a decision, whether it was Planning and Zoning Commission making a recommendation or a staff decision, and you needed to, you know, we needed to review it. And often we just viewed it as a problem-solving exercise. How, how do we get these constituents through the process? How do we do what's best for the city? So if I'm sitting up there, I'm thinking what kind of questions would I end up asking the staff at the end of the night? And here, a key question is, would looping through the development adequately, adequately improve the fire flow? What other mechanisms could adequately improve the fire flow? Those questions have not been answered. The modeling has not been done. So to reach a conclusion that the application should be denied because there's insufficient fire flow begs the question of what could be done to improve that fire flow. The best example I can give you is that the city's consultant on a previous iteration of this project, albeit smaller, the city's consultant modeled the scenario that included looping and determined that the looping would be adequate. Now, that decision could not in a will serve letter was granted. That decision could not have been made if the modeling wasn't done. So here, for the current development, the question is the same, but instead of doing the modeling this time, staff summarily denied the request. They did start down this road, and you've seen that in the memo that you've been provided, but didn't complete it. Our, as you'll hear in the timeline from McGee Development, they were told that the modeling was being done, and then it was nearly complete. And then the denial letter, oh, we don't need to do the modeling because we know that the fire flow is insufficient. A denial under this, these circumstances, in our view, is, as I said, premature, but it's, it's also not reasonable. You know, you're supposed to have reasonable grounds. You're supposed to have good cause for denial. And we don't feel like that, that's what occurred here. So before these gentlemen come up, I want to touch on two things. And, and we appreciate the public records that we received from the city in the last day. We were able to look through and didn't frankly find anything new, which was, which was refreshing. But two things from your good attorney's memo that I want to touch on. Number one, this issue of whether this is even the proper procedure to go through because it's outside of the city. This, you know, the sixty-unit subdivision was the same type of thing. And this is the process that the staff directed folks to go through, and they, they went through this process. So I, I think it's a little problematic to say now, because it wasn't part of the denial letter to say these rules, this, this municipal water code and these rules and regulations don't apply. Our folks were told to go through this process, but I think on substance, it doesn't matter whether it's going under the rules or whether it's going under a water service agreement, which, you know, in the city of Eagle, we had that with Avamore before we annexed them in. The, the question's still the same. Can you serve them? Is there going to be sufficient fire flow? Do we do the modeling to see what needs to be done? And so that's number one. Number two, I want to make clear that we are not saying, if you read our appeal letter, we are not saying that if the looping were done, that it would absolutely work. We don't know that. The modeling's not been done. So the portion of the memo that says that we're saying looping is adequate, and therefore you need to grant this application, that's not what we're saying. We're saying the modeling needs to be done to seeing if, see if the looping is sufficient. If it is, great. If it's not, you know, let, let our project manager work with the city staff and see, is there a way to provide sufficient fire flow for this project? So with that, I understand we'll have time for rebuttal, and I think I can make my, our ask a little sharper and a little clearer at the end of the night instead of repeating it twice. So with that, I'm going to ask if applicant McGee Development wants to come up. I'm not sure if one or two or three of them are going to talk, and then Mr. Mcnee. And also the information that you have tonight, the handouts, number one is from McGee Development, and that's a timeline. Mr. Velelli is going to go through that. And then secondly, what I call the, the map, Mr. McGee, Mcnee will be going over that. So, and that will be put on the screen for you as well. So Dick?
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Velelli. Nice to see you.
My pleasure, councilmen and women. My pleasure. My name is Dick Velelli. I live at five one seven Lake Shore Avenue in Dover, Idaho. I am the president of Velelli Investments, the managing member for Bobby McGee Golf and RV Resorts. I've been selected to talk to you because of my gray hair. The boys did better. Both my sons, Dicky and Mikey, they're two of the five, worked with me on this project for over four years now. They know it probably better than I do, but again, I have the gray hair. The boys also worked with me on the development of Hidden Lakes and on Lake Ponderay RV parks that we owned out at Trestle Creek for twenty-seven years. Dicky, as some of you know, recently developed the Kinnixu Health Services facility near Super One. That was his project, and I'm very proud of what he did. Mikey is still working on the hole in the ground at Bridge Street, just so you know that he's not giving up on it. That's family also. A little bit of a background, I don't want to waste your time, but I think you need to know who we are. Some of you do, but maybe some of you do not. I have been licensed real estate broker for fifty-eight years, which makes me the longest, I believe, licensed broker in the state and in California, by the way. The last thirty-seven years I have been here in North Idaho. Our company has done over twenty-seven projects in the inland northwest, most of which are in Bound, Boundary and Bonner Counties. In addition, our company has done some very large projects, not only the Hidden Lakes, which is nine hundred and forty-four acres, but we did thirteen hundred and fifty acres on the Florida River in Durango, Colorado. That was a mixed-use residential development. It was awarded the finest development in the state of Colorado. We also built a water system there and a sewer system, both of which were awarded the top sewer and water systems in the state of Colorado, which I'm very proud of. We also did a very big development in nineteen eighty that was a billion dollars. And believe me, in nineteen eighty, a billion dollars was a billion dollars. Nowadays, everyone's a billionaire. Those are some of the things we've done, and I tell you that not because I want to brag about what we've done, but I'd like you to know that we're capable of this project. We're going to make it happen. We need your assistance. This project will have a clubhouse that'll be comparable to the clubhouse we built at Hidden Lakes. If any of you, I think hopefully all of you know the clubhouse we built. Everything we do is quality. In our whole life, that is the most important thing we do, and this project will be the same. And I won't waste much of your time, but I'll go through our timeline because it, it is important that you realize how we got here. All of the information that's provided, that's provided on that timeline, I get, they're all from, we have backup documents on everything, every meeting, every conversation we have. We have the documents that will justify what I'm going to tell you. November first, we reached out to the city engineer and asked for a time to meet and discuss water for our plan. We were told to send a preliminary drawing concepts for development, and he would be back to us. He was available to meet and discuss. However, we could not make, and the city would not make a decision until after the elections. We sent plans that afternoon. We did not hear back for four weeks. November twenty-ninth, we reached out and asked for an update. We were told by the civil engineer, he could meet with us the following week. But, and you can read the quotes down there, those were quotes from the city engineer, that he would not be able to make a decision nor would the city make a decision till after January first. January twenty-fifth, we met with the civil engineer. We were told on that day we would not likely be approved for our water application. For, per information in his discussions with the new mayor, we would not be able to include our north part of our property. We were told the engineer would discuss with the new mayor and the rest of the city team, including legal counsel, the following week and would get back to us. We are still here waiting for that approval. March seventh, met with the civil engineer and received feedback from the engineer on behalf of he and the city staff, and were told the same. We could run the modeling, but they would likely deny us. He mentioned that neither he nor the mayor would approve our request for water, so really there was no reason to submit at this time. And all of these meetings, by the way, were attended by myself and the two boys. So this is not something we're making up. This is what actually has happened. He mentioned he, nor the, he nor the mayor would approve a request. The engineer mentioned on that day, we should try to arrange a meeting between the mayor of Sandpoint and the mayor of Ponderay and convince the city of Ponderay to take over the water system, which truthfully I balked at because I didn't think that was our job, to put the two mayors together and convince Ponderay to take over the Sandpoint Water System. May twentieth, more discussions. Civil engineer explained to us the modeling won't say that we can or cannot serve. But if they are unable to serve, they typically show where the system would be lacking and what is needed to make it work. He said he has never heard of a straight denial. At that point, we decided to go ahead, submit the application and have the modeling done. On May twenty-ninth, we were told we needed more information. And along these lines, the engineer who has interacted with the city more than I have will let you know all that was submitted. On June sixth, we submitted the additional information, brought a check to pay for the modeling, and we were told we wouldn't need to pay for the modeling till it was done. June nineteenth, we sent an email to the engineer requesting a status. Nothing. June twenty-seventh, we finally got Norm, the attorney, involved because we were not getting anywhere. July twenty-fifth, please keep in mind these dates, we finally heard back from the civil engineer in writing, which you have in your packet, that he did not have the results yet, but they would be in any day. That was on July twenty-nine, not fifth. On August fifth, we were informed that our application was in fact never submitted for modeling. It never went to the engineering company for modeling, even though we were told that it would be any day now. So now we're a couple of months out, and we were misled, even though two weeks earlier we were told the results would be in any day. The request for modeling was never sent. I don't know how you'd feel, but if I went to my doctor and he said, I'm doing the tests, I'll let you know how the cancer is. And two months later, he said, well, I never did the tests. Good luck. That's a little dramatic, but you have to understand, this is our livelihood. August tenth, our attorney sent a letter, and the rest is history. We finally heard back that we were denied because we did not have sufficient fire flow. We've still never heard who determined that. We were told staff figured out we didn't have fire flow. I have no idea how the staff determined that unless they did modeling, and they said they didn't, didn't do any modeling. So that's where we are. That's why we're here. We would just like to get this project off of the dead center. It's going to be, it'll be a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars in development. I think that would make us one of the biggest developments in the history of this county. It will have affordable housing. Our plan is to have veterans housing, and because I'm a vet, that's important to me. And you can maybe tell I'm frustrated, and you can read the rest if you'd like. We've been given a runaround. We waited and waited. We were told, let's let the new mayor and council get up to speed, which is fine. When we finally submitted everything, we were told it'll be three weeks. Two months later, we were told it'll be a few days. Ten days later, we were told, we're sorry, we never really submitted anything. So if you can tell I'm frustrated, I am. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to address those at any time.
Thank you, Mr. Velelli. Appreciate your comments. I think it'd be best to have the appellant just proceed with their experts and testimony and then open it up to council for questions so we can get the whole picture.
As Mr. Mcnee comes forward, we will put up his graphic, I hope. Did that share?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Scott Mcnee. Professional engineer with Sarguda Engineering in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. Consulting engineer for the applicant. Just brief background on myself, I've been an engineer working on projects throughout the five northern counties locally for about twenty-six years, including numerous projects in Bonner County. I'm the district engineer for Bottle Bay Water and Sewer, Garfield Bay Water and Sewer, Schweitzer Water Company, and a number of other local districts in the area. There is a packet of information that includes some drawings and, and other exhibits that was handed out. I'll just briefly kind of go through those and provide some explanation as to why we're putting these in front of you. So it's also up on the screen. See if I can get my mouse to work here. I apologize. I mean, mouse issue, so. Yeah. Oh, on the screen. Okay. This is not my laptop, so. So just to illustrate, this is the exhibit that staff referenced. It's from the, the master utility plan that was referenced by staff. I believe it was adopted by council in twenty twenty-two. Just for some perspective here, I'm, I've outlined the subject property, which is in green there, and that's the, the property that the applicant submitted application to serve, or that's the extent of the service area they were requesting. As you can see on here, I believe staff was referencing this exhibit when they said that there were inadequate fire flows. They were, appear to be referencing the three dead-end water mains that you see here. Sorry, I've got. Might need you to run this, Norm. Okay, so there's a dead-end main here on the end of Mcnearney, another dead-end main here on the end of Ramier, and then another one over here. And dead-end water mains are notorious for having fire flow issues because they are a single dead end to a, a main, and that's why looping is very advantageous. And that is what we had proposed. If you've got water, high volumes of water coming in from two or more directions, it's a lot easier to get the flows that you need if, and then compared to sending it just from one direction, so. Let's see. Norm, where's your page down? I just want to scroll to the next slide, so. Okay, there we go. All right, my apologies. So this illustrates the, the same exhibit. This is, this kind of outlines what we submitted as was suggested by Norm, on by Norm previous iteration of this development. It was a sixty-lot residential subdivision. The city expressed the same concerns at the time with these dead-end mains and fire flow concerns. We proposed looping through the site as noted here. And that significantly improved the fire flow to that proposed development. As a result, the city granted us a will serve letter. This, this new proposal is very similar. It's just a little larger footprint, more lots, but with that, we'd provide additional looping. The number of lots or units doesn't really affect fire flow requirements. It's more to do with the type of development and the size of the buildings. and the size of the buildings, so.
Can you just repeat that, Mr. Mcnee? I just want to make sure I got that right.
I think one of the things staff noted was that, well, the the previous approval was for a sixty lot residential subdivision. And this this new application was for three hundred or plus or minus residential units. So the number of units doesn't really affect fire flow requirements. It's the type of construction. So if you have a thousand units of a type that requires fifteen hundred gallons a minute versus a hundred units, it doesn't change the fire flow requirements. So this is just the next slide here or exhibit is just a showing that will serve letter for the previous iteration that showed that the city had and modeled that with the single loop through the the development and the the looping did result in boosting fire flows to where it was adequate enough for them to issue that will serve, so. So we submitted application course for the new development, expecting the same kind of analysis. You know, we we sent them an exhibit showing where we wanted to loop through the the development. The our understanding was the city was going to again have their consultant model that for us and then tell us whether that looping addressed the the need for fire flow or if there were other things we needed to consider, so. So another study I found to kind of illustrate that this area is in the city's master planning. This is a strategy report for the northeast quadrant of the of the water system. This was done in twenty twenty-three, so it's more recent than the the other study that was referenced. And just to illustrate again, the the study area and the subject property again here in the darker green. So this is the what that model showed without any looping and it shows it shows again these dead end lines adjacent to the southern portion of the of the McGee property. And they all, in this model, show that they have fifteen gallons a minute plus currently available. That's with the dead end line, so. Presumably with looping, that's going to increase and 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 I don't, we don't know what fifteen hundred plus means, whether that whether that's approaching two thousand or what. That was kind of the top, the top end of of how this was displayed in that exhibit. It just said fifteen hundred plus. So that's encouraging to me that we're getting that kind of flow through these dead end mains. Which gets us to or very close to the fire flows that we would need for the for the developments, so. And then finally, this exhibit from that same study shows that as part of that study, they modeled all of these water mains looping through the McGee property, as you can see exhibited here. And that study projected twenty-five hundred gallons a minute plus. So this is more to illustrate. I know there were some alternatives in that study regarding booster pumping and other options, but this is mainly to illustrate that this was, this area was, has been included in city's master planning, so. And looping was a big part of that. And the looping through the development is not just going to benefit the McGee project. It's going to benefit these surrounding properties as well because it will boost their fire flows as well, so. So that that summarizes the exhibits for you and if you have any questions, I'm happy to, I'm happy to respond, so.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. I'll start with the council. Council have any questions? I know I have one or two.
Mr. Mayor, I have one.
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
I know your your focus is on the the subject property, but and I'm I'm not a water engineer, but in this model with this picture that you've got here, it shows improved flow through your properties. What does it do to adjacent properties? Maybe not to the left, to the right, but to the south? Maybe my question more specifically, are there negative ramifications to other areas of the water district?
No, it it increases fire flows to those. I mean, because those are those are all dead end lines, so the looping provides flow from two directions to those.
How about to the south of Highway two hundred?
You know, so I'm I'm going off of this model here, which shows
Yeah, I was trying to read that model as well and interpret it myself, but you being the expert.
You know, it shows some of these areas with the, and you can see the fire flows corresponding to the dots up here. But if I So there's some areas to the south that are shown in in green, which is a thousand to fifteen hundred. There's a couple of red dots in there which are low. So if you compare that with the with the proposed improvements. You know, I don't, I don't know that the looping adversely affects these other areas, but you know, that's that's why we want, that's why we're asking it to be modeled because we don't have the answers to all these questions. The city's consultant has this water model. They could easily put the lines that we proposed looping through and and run the model and tell us and they could answer that question for for council as well. We don't control the water model. So that that's why we we're not understanding why it was denied without even looking at the model.
Can I ask you a second question? So the the original approval for sixty units in in that, if I read the the response back to you said it barely passed the minimum requirement, twenty-three PSI versus I believe it was twenty PSI minimum? Correct? So adding more units, what does that do to the pressure of the system?
Well, see, when you run a model, a fire flow model, the the majority of that.
I'm just, I'm not asking just in general if I'm, if the pressure is marginal at best and if we add more units.
Well, twenty-three is not necessarily marginal at best. You usually run a fire flow calculation down to twenty. And then you tell, you say, okay, what flow can you provide to the system? And keep the pressure above twenty PSI? So.
My question is, if we add more units, will pressure go up or down?
Pressure will go down, but we also have more looping occurring. So if you were to just add more units without consideration of any looping, then yeah, pressure would go down. But we're, and I can show you on the the original exhibit. You can see that with the sixty lot subdivision, we had looping from Vermeer through to McGee and down. With this proposal, we're also coming off this main off the end of McNearney and running it looped through the subdivision. So we're looping it from three different locations through the subdivision. So it's it's not, unfortunately, it's not a very straightforward answer unless you model it. Look at the looping, look at where the demands are.
Thank you.
Council members, any other question for Mr. McGee, Mcnee? Mr. Mcnee, just a question. On that last page, you showed the, I believe it's the Keller report or twenty twenty-two study. You seem to allude to the fact that based on those assumptions, water flows or fire flows and looping would address and rectify that. Can you just go to the bottom of that slide? I think that says twenty thirty-eight was the date on it. I just want to be sure I'm understanding what you're suggesting. Yeah, option one, twenty thirty-eight. And I'm not a hundred percent familiar with this document, but do you know what assumptions they made, what other improvements were made to the system to result in those outputs?
Well, I believe this was a, I'm assuming that was a projection to a build out condition in the year twenty thirty-eight. So they're projecting, you know, this develop, this area being built out to those levels. And as I mentioned, there were some options in there. One of them included a booster pump station. Another included some additional storage that were part of this. And that that got these flows to twenty-five hundred plus gallons per minute. Now, this development does not need twenty-five hundred gallons plus. It's a mixed use residential development. Twenty-five hundred is a, is more for an industrial zone. So I guess our question is, well, can we get adequate fire flows for our type of development with the looping alone? If not, and there's other things that need to be addressed, then that's, that's something we would work out with city, but we we need to know first whether the looping provides the needs for this development, which are not twenty-five hundred gallons a minute, so.
So just to clarify and answer the specific question, you're not entirely aware of what off-site or related improvements to the distribution center in this area are required to get this performance out of the system as depicted on figure X.
Now, as I already mentioned, that this option included a booster pump station, so.
And and storage, you thought as well, maybe?
No, there were other options. There's, there's multiple options in this study, all that address fire flows through this area. One of them was was booster pumping, another was additional water storage. But I guess my point is that they, all of these options include looping through the McGee subdivision. So the can, the the city can't achieve what they want to here with this northeast study without the looping that we're asking to be considered, so. And and it's also to point out that this area, even though it's outside the city, is an area that was, has always been considered by the city as part of their service area, so, because it's been studied in multiple studies, so.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Mr. McGee. I think we might have some questions for some other folks. I'll go with the council first. Council, any questions for Mr. Semenko or the Valeleys? I I just have two. Mr. Velely, when you, just to confirm, when you reference the city engineer, you're speaking specifically about Brandon Staglin, is that correct?
That's who our meetings are with, yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Semenko, I I just a question for you. Can you explain any thoughts you might have on the city's legal obligation to provide water service to New Year's users outside of the existing city limits?
Well, I I think that's a great question and your city attorney did delve into that in in the memo. You know, if you look at your water rules and regulations, it states right at the top there on scope that the rules are applicable to the entire drinking water system and all users. So I I think that that matters. But I would say though also is, I mean, it's no secret if somebody's outside of your city and you've got the vehicle of, you guys call it a water supply delivery agreement. I just call it a water delivery agreement, but that that can be a mechanism to do it. In the past, these have been approved through the will serve letter under the rules and the regs. So it seems to me you can go either way. Your attorney memo, you know, says we're not admitting that it does fall into these rules, but if it does, you've got to go this direction. At the end of the day, whether you go with a water delivery agreement or whether you say this falls under the rules, you've got to satisfy yourself that there's sufficient fire flow. And we don't, don't see how you can do that without the modeling. So these kinds of questions that that you're asking are frankly, questions a city councilman should not have to ask. Your staff should be able to to do that. They have done it in the past. And just to be clear, this model, the twenty twenty-three study is just an illustration, as we said in our appeal, that there is more recent information than the twenty eighteen study. But neither of these are adequate to answer the question. The modeling needs to be done. Our folks have been prepared to move forward with the modeling, as you heard, for quite some time. They're ready to pay for it. And we'd love to get the answers so we can figure out with the city, you know, how best to serve this area and provide the water pressures and the water supply that's that's needed to serve it, so. With that, I think we're ready to, when you guys are done with questions, to turn it over to the to the city staff.
Thank you, Mr. Semenko. Thank you, Mr. Velely and family and Mr. Mcnee. With that, I'll now yield the Florida civil engineer, Brandon Staglin, for a staff presentation to address any questions for the council members.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Brandon Staglin, city engineer. Let me get my insured here. Okay, so I I just want to kind of back up and start really briefly for the public record, just a really brief overview of our water system. We serve the city of Sandpoint. We serve users in Ponderay, Cootney and also parts of unincorporated Bonner County as well. The the last full water system master plan that we did estimated the system population at twelve thousand six hundred. Our sources are Lake Ponderay primarily. We have the lake waste, the wa, lake water treatment plant, you can see labeled there near city beach. We also have a source on Little Sand Creek on the north part of our system. So this map shows the different types of service that we provide. We, the blue line is our direct service area where where we provide service to users and we send them a bill and we approve new connections to them. The so that's the city of Sandpoint, parts of city of Ponderay, parts of the city of Cootney, parts of unincorporated Bonner County. We also provide wholesale service to the Seringa Water System, to the North Side Water, which is in purple and Idol Weiss Village, which is a small system at the base of Schweitzer. So the difference between those two is that we the wholesale users, we provide water to the water system and then the distribution within their water system, they have their own staff and ability to approve or deny connections and they have to maintain the water mains and the system and we just sell them water essentially. I I want to make a distinction between what we're talking about here. There are water systems who can't serve additional users because they don't have enough volume of water. That's what is happening in the southwestern United States. There's literally not enough water to provide for people. That's the bottom sketch here. The top sketch is what we're dealing with, which is that we have lots of water. Lake Ponderay is a enormous volume of water. But our system as it was built out decades ago does not have adequate pipe sizes as it moves from the city beach area up to the north part of our system. And what you get in that situation is pressure loss. So the pressure might be eighty PSI in downtown Sandpoint, but as as the water moves to the outer reaches of our system, it drops substantially and you get to a point where if you're drawing large fire flow volumes at that point, it's, you don't, you you can't provide enough pressure. So this is the original ability to serve letter from twenty twenty-two, which the appellant also brought up on the screen. The point of the ability to serve, this is also a clarification I want to make. The the purpose of the ability to serve is for the city to tell the Panhandle Health Department that we have the capacity to provide water before they will sign a final plat for a new subdivision. So what we're talking about here are adding additional obligations for future created lots to our system and committing to that. Not serving existing lots within our water system that have already been platted. So I think that distinction is important. It's, we we also talked about how the last time the model was run in twenty twenty-two, site-specific model for this sixty ERUs. They estimated that there was twenty-three PSI available at the assumed fire flow. Twenty PSI is the minimum, so it's pretty close. And just so you can get a sense of the scale, you're usually targeting between forty and eighty PSI during fire flow conditions. This is another map of the location, just for reference of the project. I think I probably have that red boundary is probably a little bit generalized. So I think that the boundary that the that they showed recently is probably more accurate, but this just tells you generally where the proposed system is at or the proposed development is at. proposed system is at, or the proposed development is at. So this is that same map that we've been looking at. I do want to clarify that one of the exhibits we were looking at earlier pointed to the blue dot just south of that red boundary. And I saw a note on it that I think was added by somebody else that said that the 2,500 number next to the dot meant that there's 2,500 PSI available. In this exhibit, which is, again, it's an exhibit from our 2022 Water System Master Plan. This is the result of a large modeling effort that our consultant did. The, the color of the dot represents the amount of fire flow deficiency. The, the black number next to the dot represents the assumed fire flow requirement. So every time you see a dot on here, it's a fire flow deficiency in our system based on 2020, 2018 demand. But the, the, the modeling was actually completed in 2022. Almost simultaneously around the same time that the other water model that we were talking about, prepared by Keller, was um prepared for the city.
Brandon, can, I, I want to make sure I cut that, what you said, the last point. Could you re- restate what you just said about the, the numbers and the color of the dot?
Please. Yeah, so you can see down there in the legend, um the color of the dot, red, means that there's greater than a 1,000 gallon per minute fire flow deficiency. Yellow means between 500 and 1,000 gallons per minute fire flow deficiency. So that's how far below the assumed value they are when they run the model. And the, the black number next to it is the fire flow requirement assumed in the model.
Thank you.
So, um this is, I don't know if we've seen this yet, but this is the development plan that was submitted along with the ability to application by the uh, by the applicant. Um, just for reference, red is there's some apartment, there's some multifamily, there's some single family lots in purple and blue. There's a RV park in the middle, and there's a clubhouse. And um, just to be clear, this whole development is within the current city of Sandpoint Water System Boundary. And also another clarification, I believe there is some golf course uh proposed for this development, but the applicant has not requested that we provide, serve water for irrigation of the golf course. So this is just for domestic use. So with that, I just, um uh, the reason that staff uh sent a letter denying an ability to serve is actually pretty simple. We already ran a model. This is the model. Um, our 2022 Water System Master Plan modeled the entire system. And even without this development, we identified several locations directly surrounding the proposed development where fire flow is not sufficient. And because of that, um, I, as the city engineer, I'm recommending that we do not commit to any additional obligations for new users, which is the purpose of the ability to serve application, is that the city commits to additional obligations in an area um of our system. The north part of our system in this, in this specific part of our system that is surrounded by existing fire flow deficiencies. So I can't recommend that we um approve the expanded development, which again goes from 60 ERUs to over 300 ERUs. And in ERU, just for the record, is an equivalent residential unit. So when you have multiple um use types in a development, you convert them all to one unit so that there, you can compare apples to apples. So an equivalent residential unit is basically the equivalent of a single family residence, what sort of demand they would need. Um, and so with that, I would uh also, I would like to bring up uh Preston Love, who's our consultant with consort engineering. He prepared the uh original 2022 Water System Master Plan, built the model that we, that we are using in, in uh this exhibit. And also, uh Preston also runs the additional site-specific fire flow analysis efforts at our, at the city's discretion for new developments. So he's just going to give a quick um overview of the technicalities in the background of how we developed that water model.
Thanks, Preston. And can you just state your qualifications um before you start and your background briefly?
Yeah, sure. Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council and Brandon. Uh, as Brandon mentioned, my name is Preston Love. Uh, I am a licensed engineer in the state of Idaho. I work with consort engineers, formerly Murray Smith. And I'm the engineer of record on the city's current water system plan. And my purpose of talking tonight is just to provide a little more background on how the model was developed as part of the water system plan and our process for handling the ongoing uh modeling analyses associated with site-specific uh potential new users. And just to give some more context on this figure that you've seen a couple of times tonight specifically. Um, so to start, uh, in 2019, we developed a hydraulic model based on current city uh GIS records um and record drawings and local staff knowledge to reflect um existing conditions um in the city's water system. The model was uh calibrated using field um hydrant flow tests throughout the system to a confidence level of plus or minus five PSI um between modeled pressures and observed um field pressures. Uh, and ultimately, the model was used to complete a existing 10-year and 20-year hydraulic analysis where we evaluated um current projected 10-year and projected 20-year system demands under um an array of demand conditions. Um, the demand conditions include average day, um, which is what um the city sees um on an average day throughout the course of the year. Uh, max day, which is the single day of um highest water demand in the city system, and then peak hour, um highest hourly use of demand in the system. Um, and, and a subset of the max day demand condition that we looked at was max day plus fire flow, where we're stressing the system with max day demands and adding um singular fire flows um at hydrant locations throughout the system. Uh, so the figure you see here represents um existing fire flow deficiencies. So that's where we have existing max day demands um loaded in the model, and we are running a point fire flow demands at all locations throughout the system. Um, and when you do a fire flow run, uh essentially what the model does is it looks at all service locations throughout the system and tells you what your limiting location is. So we're not just looking at pressure at the hydrant location that's seeing a fire flow. We are pulling um the limiting 20 PSI location in the system um to determine our available fire flow. Um, so the output numbers you see here represent essentially um what that available fire flow is, um, and colored nodes represent deficient locations um as we discussed earlier. And the challenge, as you can see in the figure, that the city has faced is providing adequate fire flow pressure to the northeast end of the system. And the reason for that is primarily an issue of head loss. Uh, and so head loss is an occurrence where you, when you have a, a water system like the city's that operates on a single pressure zone, um essentially your supply sources are providing the same pressure at all points throughout the system in theory. But what happens in practice is as flow travels through pipes to the extent of the system, you actually lose pressure because of the friction losses in the pipes. Um, and so with the city's water system configuration, you can see the sources and storage tanks are on both the um western extents and southeast extents of the system. Whereas um flow travels to the northeast extent of the system, you're seeing a lot of head loss through those pipes, and that's why you see a lot of fire flow deficiencies when you're adding high demands in the northeast end of the system, because higher flow correlates to more head loss. Um, and so I really just wanted to give some context on the background of this and also highlight that um when you see output figures like this, you're looking at one specific snapshot of one scenario of a system. Um, and so it's important to understand that there are multitude of scenarios. Um, and we, when we run these um site-specific uh modeling requests, we look at max day plus fire flow and peak hour um under existing demand conditions in the city and look elsewhere throughout the system and not just on the site uh for limiting pressure. Um, so if there's a location elsewhere in the system that hits 20 PSI or below, that will limit the fire flow ability, ability on that site specifically.
Thank you, Preston. Um, council members, any questions for either Preston or Brandon?
Mr. Mayor, can I just add a couple of things?
Go ahead.
Um, okay, so just briefly, um, I also wa- the, the timeline that was laid out by the appellant, um, I was just shown that right before the meeting, so I can't really speak to each individual um item on that, on that timeline. I think I'd probably take exception to some of the things that were supposedly said by staff. Uh, but I, I do want to a- admit that um I, I did make a mistake by um confusing when they, when they sent an email to ask for an update on the modeling on this one. I did confuse it with another project that I was uh had sent out for modeling. I actually, um, at the time I had several in the queue. And as soon as I realized that um I had incorrectly identified that project, I called them and let them know, I believe. Um, so I fully admit that. Uh, and as far as timeline, I mean, I just want to add that these, adding these large developments are, is not something that happens in a matter of weeks. I mean, this is really important stuff that we have to be careful when we provide approval and will serves for these developments. And so I know it can be frustrating, but it takes a long time to go through the process, but it's not something we fast track. Um, and again, I, so I just want to summarize the, again, one more time. The reason that staff denied the ability to serve is because um, I, my, I, as in my professional engineering opinion, I do not recommend that we add additional obligations in this specific location when we've already identified through previous water modeling, fire flow deficiencies in this specific location of the system. So, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Brandon. Um, questions from the council for Brandon or Preston at this time? I have a couple of questions. First for legal, um, uh, I'm familiar with land use hearings um where evidence is provided and there's rebuttal. In this case, is there any need for me to personally rebut or clarify any of the uh information that's such as um asking Brandon if I ever asked him to have the applicant arrange a meeting between um the mayors of Ponderay and Sandpoint? Is there any need for me to clarify that or?
I think you're gonna jeopardize your ability to be a tiebreaker if you attempt to clarify the record with evidence.
Thank you. Um, and then I have a question for Brandon and um or Preston. We heard from Mr. Mcnee that the number of units does not impact fire flow requirements, which I can maybe kind of understand. I'm not an engineer. But can you speak to what the increasing of the number of ERUs on a site specific would do to potentially adjacent fire flows? Would it uh, would it uh affect fire flows in proximity or along those transmission lines?
Uh, it does have the potential to. As I mentioned, we are looking at fire flow scenarios where we have fire flow loaded at specific locations, but system-wide, we have max day demands located at all service locations. So in the instance of increasing from 60 to 300 roughly ERUs, you're potentially adding a not insignificant amount of demand to that location. Um, typically, when you're running fire flow demand scenarios at residential locations that are one ERU, fire flow is much larger and controlling in that scenario. But when you h- have whole developments with um a larger number of ERUs, it can add up um and potentially cause pressure drops elsewhere in the system.
Thank you for clarifying or giving your opinion.
Mr. Mayor, uh, just, just to add, I, I, I think the confusion was and uh the type, the, the type of construction is what uh tells you how much fire flow gallons per minute you need at a minimum of 20 PSI. So I think maybe that's the difference.
Okay, yeah.
Is um the number of units of all the same type don't affect the number, the, the amount of fire flow that you're required to have. But I would say that the number of units absolutely affect the pressure in the rest of the system when you add demand, both in the normal operating condition of the system and also during these fire flow conditions that we run the model with.
Um, I, hearing no other further questions for um Brandon or Mr. Love um or our attorneys, um, Mr. Semenko, would you like to rebut any evidence or uh anything?
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity. This will not take long. So we didn't hear anything tonight from staff that's different than what's in the decision letter. The decision was based simply on the current status of the system. If you look at the current status of the system, you come up with this conclusion that we shouldn't allow additional folks to be supplied. And what I hear tonight is akin to a recommendation that there be a moratorium, that there not be any additional development in that area. That's not the question before you tonight. The question before you tonight is, was the denial reasonable? Uh, was it uh for good cause? Remember, our request was to model not what's all, what's out there right now. We, we know that's what's been modeled. That was what was just explained by staff. We're asking to model the proposal. So I'm back to, if I was sitting on city council at the end of the night, the question I would want to ask is would multiple looping through this proposed development adequately improve the fire flow? That's not the current condition. That's the proposed condition. We know from the previous uh proposal that was given a will serve letter that looping improved fire flow adequately to allow that to move forward. Does this triple multiple looping that's been described by Mr. Mcnee through the development adequately improve the fire flow? You can't say yes or no to that. The modeling needs to be done. That's what we're asking for tonight. So whether the application was conditionally approved with the requirement that there be adequate fire flows demonstrated, or the, the denial letter was simply set aside, and the matter was remanded to staff to work with the applicant to do the modeling to determine, can we improve the fire flow sufficient for this project and relatedly, what's the impact on the surrounding area? Is it going to improve it? Is it going to make it worse? Is it going to stay the same? Folks can come up here and give their opinions all day. There's a model. You've invested time and money in this model. The applicant's willing to put money into having this exact scenario modeled. Let's get the answers to those questions and see if we can move forward uh with this development. And if not, maybe we identify, as the mayor was alluding to, maybe there's some other things that could be done that might address the fire flow issue. If it's a real issue out there today, don't you want to look at potential alternatives to improve it? Not just for this future development, but for the existing communities out there. So that's what we're asking for tonight. Um, we're actually not disagreeing with anything staff said that the current condition is what it is. The question is, does the proposal with the looping and maybe other things that are identified improve the situation? That's not been modeled. That's what needs to be done. And I don't know if it's my fault for pushing the staff to give us an answer, and they just said, no, we can't do this. Or if we, for some reason, the effort to model it was just abandoned, but that's where we would like to go. So again, whether it's a conditional approval of the water service request with, you know, conditions including that you've got to demonstrate adequate fire uh supplies, fire pressure, or you know, candidly, if I was in your position, I would feel much more comfortable saying, ah, this denial maybe is a little premature. Let's get this modeling done. We want to remand it back to you, staff. Work with the applicant, see, see if we can get a greater understanding of our water system and what might improve it for future development and potentially for the existing folks that rely on the water system. So with that, uh, we appreciate your consideration tonight. Apologize for taking up so much of your time uh and thank staff and, and your council for making this opportunity available tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Semenko, and thank you, Valeles and Mr. Mcnee for your time as well. Uh, with that, uh, council, you've heard a lot tonight, um a lot to digest and think about. Um, uh, at this point, we will now deliberate, so. Is there any deliberation at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Councilman Spiro.
You know, after processing all this, you're right, there's a lot to digest. Such a decision that has large implications to our city, to our future. Our duties to our citizens and our water users, as I wrote down here. So for me to feel more comfortable, I do personally make a motion to continue this discussion at, say, January fifteenth meeting.
There's a motion to continue discussion to the January fifteenth meeting.
Second.
There's a second from Council President Rule. Is there a discussion?
I would concur that it's a lot to process for the council. I seem to be getting some head nods and. When we're making these big types of decisions. Sometimes I find myself. Waking in the morning, knowing more than sitting on the dais and making it a quick decision, so.
I also just want to know, I appreciate the time you guys coming out to talk. It's not easy and I do appreciate that.
Any further council discussion on the motion? This will be a roll call vote?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
For clarification, that's January fifteenth at five thirty PM. I assume that's the. Was the intent at a regular council meeting.
That's correct.
Do we need a quick break, council members?
Please.
Yes, please.
For clarification before the break for council, so the record is closed on this matter. There shall be no discussion with anyone or each other. Related to what you've heard tonight between now and the January fifteenth meeting.
Thank you, Fonda. I would entertain a motion for a five minute break. All those in favor?
Aye.
Reconvening at seven fifteen PM, December eighteenth, city council meeting. Moving forward, we are about to enter the consent calendar, but I did have a request from Councilman Schreiber to. Rearrange the agenda. So Councilman Schreiber, if you want to make that motion, we will entertain that.
Yes, thank you. I move that we rearrange the agenda such that. Item nine, the staff presentation on the parking requirements for the Bridge Street Hotel occurs prior to item number seven. The. Proposed resolution for authorizing the grants.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Moved by Schreiber, second by Spiro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is so amended. Okay, moving on, we'll now proceed with the consent agenda. For the record, the total amount of bills is one million seventy-two thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents for regular payables. Counsel, are there any questions or any items you wish to remove from the consent calendar? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Moved by Schreiber, second by Howard. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With no more old business on the agenda, we'll move on to new business, beginning with a proposed resolution updating the city's procurement. And contract policy. I now yield the floor to Central Service Director Cheryl Hughes. Thank you, Cheryl.
Hello. Good evening, again. Let me just share my screen. Okay, so before you this evening is a. Item to update our procurement policy and this update is to. Provide. Greater flexibility for staff who have time sensitive purchases. This is something that happens somewhat regularly, unfortunately, in, at the wastewater treatment plant. If there's a pump that goes down, our current policy requires. That we get three quotes, we get comparables. And there's no flexibility for following Idaho code, which is Idaho code sixty-seven twenty-eight oh six. That doesn't require. Three quotes or comparables until you reach seventy-five thousand. Our current policy requires it at five thousand. So what we've done is try and be more flexible. This is feedback from staff. If we have a pump that goes down, we don't have time sometimes, the lead times, we don't have time to get three quotes. We need to make sure those plants continue to run. So we really do need some greater flexibility on time sensitive purchases. With that being said, you will see that we have the current, the first threshold. Being up to, up to twenty thousand dollars and it. It will basically be price comparisons for purchases over five thousand. And what we're going, the plan is that we will on the backend in procurement office in central services. We will do the price comparisons on the backend, so staff doesn't have to worry about it, so we can ensure that we are. Receiving the best value and price for the taxpayer dollars. And then we would continue moving forward on the procurement. Essentially. The time sensitive nature, we would still. Try and get quotes, but if we are not able to in a extreme, you know, depending on. The nature of the purchase, if we can't do it quick enough. Then we can then follow Idaho code sixty-seven twenty-eight oh six. And so this way we are constantly ensuring that we are following state law on procurement. And we are still ensuring that we're being fair, that we have integrity in our procurement. And that we are being responsible, ensuring that we're getting the best value for the taxpayer dollar. So that's essentially what this policy change is. It is providing that flexibility for those time sensitive purchases. So it is. It is, it is reducing. Us from six levels of procurement process, which is a little bit complicated. Down to three, so up to twenty thousand. They are required of five thousand or more to do a purchase order. Those will get price comparisons. Again, if it's time sensitive, we will follow Idaho code. We will be doing random annual department audits. To ensure compliance with obtaining price comparisons that are required at five thousand and above. But we're planning on trying to do that as much as possible within central services, so. That will kind of negate the need to do department audits because we're going to be taking that responsibility on our own. The next level is twenty thousand to seventy-five thousand or just under. And that one will be obtaining three written quotes. Again, if it's a time sensitive purchase, it will follow Idaho code. So the difference between written quotes and price comparisons is price comparisons is we. You can go on the internet, do some searches, find, you know, like. You know, the same model, whatever we're looking for, if it's a pump, say. And that becomes the price comparison. When it's a written quote. Then the vendors have to submit to us the estimate or their quote. In a more formalized fashion, so it's not just comparing pricing and. Making the website snip and showing where we got the price from. So it becomes more formal. And that is the twenty to seventy-five thousand. If it's seventy-five thousand or over. We follow Idaho code. If it is up to a hundred and fifty thousand, we would get the three written bids. If it is over a hundred and fifty thousand, then we do the full competitive, which is you have to advertise. It's a. Formal solicitation, public bid opening, so. That is essentially what we're trying to do and it is to create greater efficiency and. And being able to address these. This happens mostly in the plants as well as some streets where we just, we need product now. Or a pump or piece of equipment and we could use some flexibility in the process. The only other change that we have done on the procurement policy is. Within the document, because it has been formalized, we removed all reference to city administrator. Those are, those are the changes that have been made and we ask council to please consider approving this procurement policy update.
Thank you, Cheryl. Council, any questions for Director?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
Thanks for all of this. I don't have any issues with the changes that you've made. I think it makes a whole lot of sense. But perhaps one of the first times that I'm reading through this entire document, I noticed that. Can, that there's a. Local preference. Giving preference to local businesses, which I think is a great. Option, but is there a reason that it doesn't apply to construction or professional services?
Oh, the. It is just standard practice that local preference applies only to commodities, essentially. And that is, that is because most of the time, construction, just because of Idaho code. And a lot of federal requirements don't even allow for local preference. So it's, it's just best practice and industry standard that it's for goods. And it's for anything under twenty-five thousand dollars. And if the lowest quote was from, let's say, Arizona, let's put that out there. And our local was within ten percent, then the local vendor is able to match the lowest quote that we received. So, and they have the opportunity to either do so or not. Most do take advantage of it.
And so you're describing a distributor of items, not something that has to be manufactured here.
That's correct. Well, any commodity, so, but that is correct, essentially, yes.
Okay, yeah, because we don't manufacture too many things.
Yeah.
And you, you mentioned that it was. State law that prevents construction or?
Construction is odd when it comes to local preference. First of all, it's usually over twenty-five thousand. The threshold is twenty-five thousand dollars and construction is typically significantly higher than that. So it's really not going to be applicable anyway. If it was under twenty-five and we absolutely could use local preference, as long as we were doing it as a. Quote or bid and not. A proposal, which is why it doesn't necessarily apply to consultant services. Because that is different than just a quote or bid. But again, construction is usually not. Low and most of the projects we have that are under twenty-five, they're local contractors anyway. So local preference doesn't usually. It doesn't become applicable in construction. And if there's any grant related to it, it's absolutely not applicable because federal dollars don't allow you to use local preference.
Sure. That's excellent. Thanks for that clarification.
And it's sexy in question I have written down.
Mr. Mayor. Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
Hi, Cheryl. Not being, have a lot of history with the city and certainly not sitting up here. Can you? When I look at these, first of all, I have no objections to what you're proposing, but. Give me some context of why the prior administrative administration would have had tighter restrictions than state code. What would, I like to understand what their thinking was before we go change it. And I don't know if you can. Help bring some light to that. Why was, why were the procedures much, I'll call them more controlled?
They were more restrictive. So when I first came to the city, the contracts procurement officer position. And it was a new position in the city and this was like five and a half years ago now. And there, there really wasn't any kind of formal processes. And so there. It just, let's see. How best to put this? It. There wasn't a formal process and so we weren't necessarily getting quotes for everything. We weren't doing price comparisons for everything. And it, not to anybody's fault, right? They, they were making their purchases. But it, it needed to be tightened up. And the thresholds previously. Got the processes in line. The procurement policy has helped create accountability, transparency. Everybody understands the importance of it, being responsible with the taxpayer dollars as well as the rate payer dollars. If it's a utility fund. So it was really just to, to get that policy and the processes. To be followed and understood.
And Councilman Howard, I would add to that with the conversion to department heads who are, you know, trusted, accountable. You know, informed. Employees, just to provide a little more flexibility and ownership of this.
And thank you for that. Can you also then say if, if we provide, I guess, some relaxation of the controls? How do we ensure that we stay or wisely using taxpayer dollars? Can you just talk maybe a little bit more? You touched upon it briefly.
So what would happen is there's a purchase order required for anything five thousand dollars or more. That is required and that will continue. So let's say Haley here submits a requisition. She needs to purchase, purchase some. Some soap and she attaches the quote to that requisition. When that comes through, the contract, the grants contracts procurement officer, Amber. She sees that, she pulls it, she knows, you know, what soap Haley's looking for. She's going to do her price comparisons on the backend. She's going to get two other price comparisons at the very least. And then attach those to that requisition that goes through approvals to be final PO. So. Within central services is where a lot of that backend work will take place. With the grants contracts procurement officer. And if she has any questions, then of course she'll reach out to staff, but that's where the controls is. I do the final, well, Sarah in finance director does the final approval of all POs for. For the coding. I have the final approval that all processes have been followed. And, and so it goes through four approvals. The supervisor approves it, the department head approves it, if it's not central services. Amber in procurement is approving it, that everything's in line, then it comes to me and then it ends with Sarah, so. There's, there's a lot of controls through the process.
And can I assume, I don't know what frequency you do it, but is there like a monthly reconciliation, okay? Or is it weekly where you say, okay, here's everything that was spent, here's how we're tracking against the budget. We're not, you know, we're not way overspending early in the year and. Is there some reconciliation process? I'm sure there is.
Yeah, I, Councilman Howard, so the high level is quarterly, we get financial reports. In the beginning of the year, you know, we have bottom line budgeting by department, so for instance, if. Parks had five thousand dollars budgeted for soap or supplies, but they found they needed to spend. Four thousand there to add to something else, it's bottom line budgeting. So in the beginning of the year, there's a lot of flexibility in those department head and those general ledger items. As we get towards the end of the year, obviously, anything that's been used or manipulated like that needs to be watched carefully. And internally, we all discuss that to make sure they're watching that. Sarah's last eyes on it, so we get our quarterly financial reports. And as we approach the end of the fiscal year, we'll see if we're over or under or where, you know, guardrails need to be put up. But it's going to come down to the department heads managing those budgets.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, Council President Rule.
My comment would be is that this is not the first time we've sort of seen this come in front of us. And part of this is due to inflation and some of those categories were pretty small and pretty low and just for. Some of the employees to get their jobs done, we had to expand and increase those numbers. Also, just for historical context for you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
So I noticed in this document that. time sensitive purchases is sort of the deciding factor. Is there a, a hard definition of what a time sensitive purchase is? I know it's kind of up to discretion, but.
It, it kind, so part of this whole process would be the director also authorizing this as a time sensitive purchase. You know, if, if, if the wastewater treatment plant supervisor puts in a requisition and in the notes has stated that this is time sensitive. It's a pump that went out. The plant could essentially go down if we do not replace this pump quick enough. That would be a time sensitive purchase. And the director is also part of the approval process that's approving that. So it's, it's really the director that's helping determine if it truly is a time sensitive purchase. We also pay attention to things like, like that as well. If somebody says it's a time sensitive purchase, but we were talking about it two months ago, then is it time sensitive? Then, then we have a conversation. So we do, staff work really hard to make sure that they follow our processes and policies and whatever help they need from us to ensure that they continue to be able to follow. Then, then we will give all the assistance that we need. But it is ultimately between the director and central services that that kind of make that determination. We're not calling it an emergency, and that's because an emergency has completely different process. So, but time sensitive, I mean, that's fair. There's, there are purchases that are definitely time sensitive, but not quite considered an emergency.
Certainly. Thanks.
I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution updating the city of standpoint procurement policy and contract policy.
Bill moved. Second.
Moved by rules, second by Duquette. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Hull?
Yes.
Counselor Ducat?
Yes.
Counselor Spurre?
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Next, referencing the amended agenda, we will now move to item number nine. Staff will now provide an update on the parking requirements at 50th Bridge Street, the hotel at City Beach. Again, yield the floor to, or yield the floor to Jason Welker, planning community development director.
City planner Bill Dean joined me. Won't you grab that, Trevor? Again, Council, I'm just going to join the Zoom meeting here.
Video.
All right. Thank you. This is a pretty straightforward one. This is an informational presentation on a staff decision that was made recently after being approached by the developers of the hotel at City Beach, the 56 Bridge Street Hotel. They came to us in recent weeks following the May approval of the conditional use permit for their, what at the time was 176 room hotel with a 8,000 square foot restaurant, 6,000 square foot event space and so on. During that condition use permit hearing process with the planning zoning commission, it was, it was presented, the parking requirements per standpoint city code. There's a formula, you can see it in our code, requiring one parking space per E, they call it for hotels per room. And then additional parking spaces for things like event space based on square footage, restaurant space, based on what percentage of the restaurant will be used only for hotel guests versus outside guests. And the formula revealed that 240 parking spaces, actually it was 244 parking spaces were required by code. In the C U B application, the hotel presented a proposal for 240 parking spaces on three levels of structured parking. This included an innovative use of valet parking. And i- if you recall at the time, there was, there was something like 50 or so spaces that were basically double parked spaces to, to achieve the 240 number. Recently, the, the developers of the hotel came to the city and, and proposed taking advantage of some other provisions within standpoint city code related to parking. And that's why I shared my screen. I'm going to share my screen if you hear and just pull up two sections of standpoint city code that relate to tonight's presentation. Let me make sure I'm getting the right thing up here for you. And I've pulled up, the first provision is nine, oh, you can't see that. You can only, there we go. The first provision that is being applied in this case is our in lieu parking fee provision. This is a, a right that any developer in a commercial district outside of the parking exempt zone is allowed to employ to basically pay in lieu fees by their way out of certain parking spots. On the purpose, you can read it here. I don't need to read it to you. The important figure here is the $10,000 number. The, the, the hotel developers, the Avril family proposed buying 40 spots in Liu, equalling $400,000. These funds go into the city's parking improvement fund, which I believe there's a definition of here as far as what that fund. There you go, parking fund use. This is a, a fund dedicated for improvements or enhancements to off street, sorry, off street parking facilities in our commercial districts. So that, that was part of the proposal. However, they were also looking to take advantage of 951 in our code, which I will pull that up for you now under general provisions for off street parking and loading facilities. And that is what I'm going to highlight right here, the parking demand analysis. So the, a professional engineer, Kim Lee Horn, which you saw the report in the staff packet tonight, was provided by the developers of the hotel. Staff reviewed that report. Kim Lee Horn is a nationally recognized engineering firm that's licensed in the state of Idaho. And we took no issue with the findings of that report, which did reveal that. And in fact, I have to apologize, there was a typo, not a typo, it's leftover from a previous version of my staff report. The finding was that 144 spots would be required at peak demand time based on the specific circumstances of, of the 56 Bridge Street project and similar projects in other areas, including hotels operated by the Avril family in Whitefish, Montana. So the 144 number was revealed as the peak demand level. And the Avril's were asking for 145 spaces in their revised site plan, basically. And that, that equates to the elimination of one level of structured parking. So that's the background. The, the planning team, including Bill and myself and Brandon, our engineer, who weighs in on all things parking related, determined that the report was valid, that, that the study was valid, that the request was, was fair. And that the offer to pay $400,000 in lieu fees particularly, rather than just asking for relief from 95 spots, rather combining the two provisions in code of, of the in lieu payment with the administrative reduction through the parking demand analysis. We, we determined that there was no reason not to, you know, entertain this idea. So it, it was determined on the staff level that this was a, an opportunity that we wish to allow the developers to take advantage of. And there's obviously going to be a mutual benefit for the city when we see that inflow of $400,000 into our, our parking fund, which can then be turned around and put towards improvements in the area of the hotel. Of course, the next agenda item is about grants that we're looking forward to do improvements at City Beach Parking Lot as well. So there's a mutual gain for the, the community in that regard as well. So I'm happy to take any questions. If I've missed anything, Bill, feel free to jump in.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
A quick question, and I, I think I read it in the, the materials that we had. But in the event of a high demand situation, did I see that overflow parking could go to City Beach Parking? Did I see that somewhere in the proposal?
I don't believe the Kim Lee Horn report suggested that. It suggested, or it found that the peak level demand would be 144 parking spots. So of, of course, there are, you know, that, I'm not, I'm not part of the engineering team, but there presumably, when it, it demand exceeds that expected peak demand, the, the public parking facilities at City Beach would be available. There's also been discussions of, of the, the hotel potentially leasing the spots immediately across, of cross Bridge Street from the hotel in the case of, you know, special events where there's expected to be 350 participants, for example. That there's, you heard about a lift station upgrade going on there. Exactly how many spots will be available is not certain. The lift, the lift station upgrade is actually going to impact some of the parking spots in that location. But if or when we undertake improvements in City Beach Parking Lot and that parking lot adjacent to the RV park, we, we would look at, you know, perhaps making some of those spots, spots available to the hotel on a lease basis in the case of special events a couple of times a year.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Spurre.
Did I miss what time the peak, they had peak?
The, the Kim Lee Horn report looked at, my understanding is they, they looked at actual data for occupancy at the hotels run by the Avril's in Montana at the time that they did the study, and then they assumed 50% greater occupancy during peak time. So that, you know, something like 40% of the rooms are occupied on October 28th, when they did the study. They assumed that 50% more rooms would be occupied during peak season. That was based on their, I think their analysis of historic occupancy at similar hotels and how during peak times you get a certain occupancy rate versus the shoulder season when they did the study. So, yeah, they didn't assign an actual date to that. It was more just ratios of peak versus off peak times.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Duquette, you are recognized.
Thank you. Um, I, I just, I guess, okay, my question is, where will they put parking? If not, if not the whole total 245 that they thought, 176 rooms and an event center and a restaurant and employees. I think some of, and maybe this is for discussion after a motion is made.
There's, this is just a information.
Okay, because we're not, okay. Um, I, I guess, I don't see, in a perfect world, I see this working. They talked about airport shuttle, people carpooling, you've seen Schweitzer, people don't even carpool to go up there around here. One person drives up and there's a free bus. I'm just worried about parking with this hotel and the restaurant and the event center being right there at City Beach that's already got a parking issue. And employees, they're talking about hotel employees commuting. I mean, I looked at that survey in our multimodal transportation plan. Most people like to drive their cars, it said in there. And where are the employees going to park? We don't have park and ride options. I don't, I just have, I'm worried about that not being enough parking by them giving up one whole level that they planned. And I don't know what, what we do about that. I say in a perfect world, people would carpool. Amtrak comes in at 2:30 in the morning. That's not, people aren't going to walk to the hotel carrying their bags, you know. And they talked about our trails. Again, it's, I don't, I don't see it. I don't see there's room for employees. And where are they, 40 extra parking places, where would they be? And how will that 400,000 be used?
Thank you, Councilwoman Duquette. I might be able to add a little color to this. First, I think you know, if not, parking is one of my passions. In the previous decade, we eliminated all parking requirements downtown. There was great controversy at the time about that. It, it allowed businesses such as Joel's and others to expand, change of use without providing this arbitrary parking number that these national manuals suggest you need. You're, you're probably aware that Super One and other grocery stores build parking lots for their maximum day. And the rest of the year, we've taken usable ground and converted it, you know, into asphalt. I've been personally contacted by mayors and council members from across the country asking how our no parking downtown policy has worked out. And people are replicating it. We've been written about for it. So in this case, to answer your question about what's the plan and how does this weave together? What you'll hear in the next agenda item is a proposed grant submission for a improvement of the City Beach Parking Lot. Pairing up that with this parking in lieu funding, my hope is that we will end up in a place where we can do automated parking at City Beach, paid automated parking. Presently, City Beach is closed to overnight parking. I like automated parking because there's no requirement for staff to enforce it. We don't have to pay 50, $60,000 a year for, so like the Spokane Airport, you only get in and out when you pay. I envision us having a, a discount QR code or something for city residents. And to have a parking revenue source that will allow us in the future to maintain that, that beach parking. So when we look at all this, there's a lot of inefficiency at the beach parking right now. My teenage son unfortunately goes down there sometimes and meets his friends. There's no disincentive for five kids to drive five cars down there if they're paying three, five bucks a day or whatever. Hopefully they'll think twice about that. So long and short, I hope that by the time this hotel breaks ground, we will have a very robust plan to bring to the council for paid parking at City Beach automated. And the final kind of icing on this is many communities are using something called dynamic parking, which actually changes the price depending on the day or how many spaces are available in the lot. So if it's a Monday morning and the lot's wide open, it might be three bucks a day. But if it's a big convention event and there's only, you know, 20 parking spots left, that price changes to maybe 20 bucks an hour. So you, you, you match the supply and demand to the market. And it's a great way to manage parking in communities. So that's sort of the vision and the hope where we'll be in a year.
How much in the future would that vision be, however? If the hotel is going to start next year? It sounds like quite a, quite a project. It sounds awesome. It sounds like quite a project. And what about employees? They can't, they're not going to be able to pay that.
Mr. Mayor, may I, can I jump in a little bit?
Go ahead, Council.
You know, I operated Trinity at City Beach from 2009 until this past summer here. Our peak volume was 1,000 customers a day, a little over 300 customers per meal period for breakfast, lunch and dinner at the busiest times from 4th of July to Labor Day weekend. While still operating special events on the outs on our south lawn, which could be like the Spud Cup, as well as they had a small 70 to 80 person conference room that they would also be running concurrently as we were full and we had events on the south lawn. I think one thing that doesn't get taken into consideration, excuse me, is your checkout times. Okay, you have a lot of your people check out between 6:00 AM and 11:00 AM, right? The parking lot empties out, parking lot empties out. You have employees that then become, come in from the housekeeping to your front desk people, to your restaurant people. Not all of them are allowed to park on the actual site. We used to park across the street as well. One interesting thing about that area though, is the amount of people, like with our employees, when we offered parking, when I paid for parking passes across the street, everybody drove, right? When I took that away and I said, you've got to pay for your own parking pass, everybody figured out how to get there, whether it was via bicycle, longboard, their drop top Adidas, ride sharing, whatever it might be. Your housekeeping staff leaves, they exit the building roughly at noon to 1:00. Well, most of your check-ins start coming around 2:00 to 3:00 as well, too. So you constantly have this flow of parking coming and going throughout the entire day. From 2:00 to 4:00 is the slowest time at the restaurant. That's our dead hour. That's when we're doing our shift change as well. And you also have people at City Beach, right? You're, you're getting to the, after the hottest part of the day, people are starting to leave around 2:00, 2:00 to 4:00 from City Beach as well. And taking off, we're now opening up parking spaces. You also have your fishing boats. What really takes up the most parking down at City Beach is the truck and trailer slips. It removes about 70 parking spaces from the City Beach, from the public use that we can have right now. So granted, the hotel may be smaller in terms of the hotel down there was what, roughly 56 rooms? The restaurant could still serve 300 people. The conference room being there serving roughly 80 to 100 people as well. I could count on the times on my hand that we actually had a full parking lot where either restaurant guests had to park it. Restaurant guests had to park at City Beach or hotel guests had to park at City Beach and walk their stuff over to the front desk. If we had any troubles at all, it was people, uh, going to City Beach. And parking in the hotel's parking lot and walking down to City Beach when we did not have somebody that was able to monitor the parking. Hopefully that answers your question a little bit.
Hotel's a lot bigger.
I agree, but, but, well, let's talk about that. It is a little bit bigger. So even at peak season in July, the hotel still may not sell out. Every single room. And I've seen that since two thousand and nine, where you'd think that the hotel would be completely sold out. They still have four to five rooms available. So for us to think that a hotel would put in a hundred and seventy-five rooms and charge roughly. I don't know, double than what they're charging now from two hundred and fifty dollars to let's say five hundred dollars a room. I would say that we may have several years before that, that vicinity books out at a hundred and seventy-five rooms. Without bringing in some type of huge convention center that may take out, or a convention that may take every single room. Down there. And if we're doing that, I'm guessing they're probably going to have transportation.
Okay, in a perfect world.
That would be a great day, in my mind, if you guys, a convention of that size in our downtown.
Wouldn't be going anywhere near that.
What if it was on sustainability? Uh, any other council questions or, uh, information needed on this item?
Mister Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
So just to clarify, this decision's already been made and it cannot be changed at all?
It's a legislative action, uh, that's enumerated in our code and we brought this forward just so both the councils aware and the public's aware. Of how this is happening and that it's not some shady backdoor thing that's benefiting anyone. It's just. We just wanted to keep everyone informed and have full transparency of how this process works.
So it cannot be changed, is that what you said?
You'd have to change code.
Change the code, okay.
And Mister Mayor, if I can just interrupt, I think you mentioned it's an administrative action.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Cause like, I guess, listening to that back and forth was great and the thought that came to my mind is that, um, you know. Obviously, we don't want to pave paradise, right? And paving all of City Beach totally eliminates the whole reason for City Beach. Um, but let's think about that worst case scenario where there is a full hotel. And there's a really popular convention and it happens on a summer day where there's a lot of beachgoers. Um, could we put it in the approval that? Uh, they would have to have a plan to address that with something like Counselor Dick just mentioned, like transportation to an off-site parking lot. Is that something that we can do or has this already been done and we cannot add any more color to it at this point?
Um, so this is a provision in the code that allows, um, you, me, anyone to activate these provisions. So.
With administrative approval?
With administrative approval.
Has that approval already been given or?
Um, that's my understanding. Is, uh, Jason, can you clarify?
There are only the, um, parking demand analysis. Uh, requires administrative approval. The, the in lieu is completely by right. So, um, I will say the option was given to the hotel to pay for the entire, uh, relief and in lieu fees. Yeah, the, the hotel is, is facing some, and I'm not a representative of the hotel developers, but. I'm, I'm a citizen of the United States in twenty twenty-four and I know that with interest rates as they are, with financing as difficult as it is, with construction costs. Having myself just wrapped up, helped overseeing a eight million dollar construction project are at ridiculously high levels right now. Um, the hotel is looking for ways to reduce the, the cost burden of this project and structured parking is around seventy thousand dollars per spot. Is what it goes for right now. So ninety-five spots of reduction is a huge savings to the hotel. So the, the, the ask that they. Pay the entire in lieu fee, um, was respectfully co- countered with. What about a parking demand analysis that allows for a, a reduction? So that, that's how, that's why I call this a, you know, a benefit for the city and that we're getting a four hundred thousand dollar contribution to our, our, our parking improvement fund. Ob- obviously, full transparency, the, the desirable outcome would have been a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment towards that fund. Um, but we understand the reality of, of development in twenty twenty-four in the planning and community development department. And this was something that was allowed in code as well. So yes, the decision has been made administratively. Um, I'm very sensitive to public perception, of course. I've been in your seat before. I wanted you guys to be aware of this so that. Heat didn't come to you later on, so that you, you understand the background of this. You understand that this isn't just some backdoor deal. This is something that could have been asked for a year ago, actually. And quite frankly, probably should have been asked for a year ago. This, this, I'm, I think the developer should have asked for this, should have been offered this a year ago. Because it's right there in our code. Um, they probably should have dug a little deeper and not proposed two hundred and forty spots to start. Cause I would have rather this have been in the original proposal approved by the conditional use permit. And trust me, I went back and re-watched the conditional use permit hearing. I read the transcript from it. I looked for any evidence that. That there was a requirement to two hundred and forty spots be provided through that process and there was not. It was not conditioned that two hundred and forty spots be required. If it had been. This would be in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission right now for an amendment to the CUP process. But an amendment to the CUP was not required because it was not a condition of the conditional use permit. That's why I included that original, um, report in your staff packet tonight, your council packet tonight. So, yes, this is a, it wasn't a decision that was made lightly. Um, I'm very conscious of the potential impact this can have on City Beach. But this is also a project that is something that is a partnership between the city and the, and developers. This is a project that stands to bring great economic development to the community and this is something that they're allowed to pursue within our code. So they, they chose to pursue it and they, they chose to, uh, combine the two provisions of the in lieu fee with the demand analysis. And our team, I mean, we, you know, we've read this several times now and it, it, it's hard to take issue with it. Um, the mayor mentioned the sort of arbitrary nature of our parking requirements. If this development were a hundred yards to the west, there would be zero off-street parking required.
Uh, to, to that point, I'm actually going to speak at a very prominent mountain town, uh, in January as a consultant on. How to eliminate and address off-street parking because people are so impressed by the fact that we eliminated that requirement and standpoint. Um, so I hope Councilman Schreiber that in three years, we are in a situation where we've got so much activity downtown that. We have enough demand to build parking structure, uh, somewhere, uh, maybe on the city lot or elsewhere, but you need that stress. That, that demand in order to finance and pay for those parking structures. But I. Sincerely look forward to working with you and the rest of the council in the future years on how we can further improve our off-street parking. Uh, policies and, um, work to build in great town.
Mister Mayor.
Um, sure, go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
I have a lot of thoughts, but I guess if this decision's already been made, it's a moot point and it's not really worth discussing, but I would just say that. This feels a lot like we're giving a public resource to a private developer and I don't think the public's going to be very happy about. Paying for parking that used to be free so that the developer didn't have to build it.
Sure, and I, I appreciate that and I hope it's not framed that way. Right now, um, the majority of, uh. Vehicles I see at City Beach are not residents. So, uh, if you go back on the record, I've been pushing for paid parking, uh, since I ran for mayor and, uh, it's something I hope to implement with you all this year. And I hope to provide a really robust residential discount for, um, that, just like the dump stickers or something else. So. We're gonna be working through that. To Councilwoman Duquette's question about, sounds like a process it is. And I think it's gonna be really exciting and, um, gonna come to you for your support on it. So, and engagement, so. Uh, if there's no further discussion, um. I think we will now move on to agenda item six, seven. Thank you. Oh, Councilman, or Director Welker. Staff seeks council support for a grant application to the Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation Waterway Improvement Fund for RV funds. To support improvements at City Beach Park. I'll now yield to Jason.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen again and Maeve is joining me up here since this is a parks. Planning and development project and she is our Parks Planning and Development Manager. So, uh, I apologize for the last minute amendment to the item tonight. Um, as is the case with these things, we're, um, often, you know. Having to pivot, uh, the, the reason for this, this pivot in terms of the focus of the, uh, Waterways Improvement Fund Grant was. After the presentation that Maeve and I made to the Parks Commission last week. We received two pieces of information. We received a, a, an estimate for a quote for what the work that was being proposed was going to cost. That was a big one. And I attended the, uh, Waterways Improvement Fund District One Committee Meeting on Monday. At the Bonner County Commissioner's Office or Bonner, yeah, in the, um, Commissioner's, um, chambers at, at the government building. And that meeting's actually available on YouTube as well, so you can see my presentation to that committee. And the committee also agreed that the initial proposal for the Waterways Improvement Fund was not. We were not ready to, to pursue that, but they, I, I proposed to kind of back up, uh, proposals and they said that. They would support an application for either of those. So I'm gonna go into some more detail about that. Um, these are the two grants that we're gonna be applying for. I'm gonna kind of tag-team this with Maeve. The, just a little information about these, they're administered by the Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation. They come from RV registration fees. And from motorized, uh, boat registration fees. So the, um, Waterways Improvement Fund is specifically for, um. Uh, well, you can see it there, but I, I did clarify, it's actually specifically for, um. Amenities that serve the motorized boating community. There's other, there's other non-motorized projects we wanted, we want to do at the city. This one specifically to be used for improvements to access to more, um, uh, waterways that serve motorized boaters. So these are the two funds we're going, oh, and just to give you a little background, the RV fund is the most, um, the largest fund. Administered by the IDPR. They have around six million dollars in that fund annually. Um, the Waterways Improvement Fund is the second most well-funded program that the state administers in that one. It's a little fuzzy how much they have this year, but it's between one point three and one point eight million dollars they have to allocate this year. Another important fact about the Waterways Improvement Fund is that, uh. No single county can be awarded more than fifty percent of the total amount in that fund. Okay, and historically, Bonner County and Cootney County have been the largest recipients of. Funds from the Waterways Improvement Fund. Obvious reason, Priest Lake, Pondry Lake and Lake Coeur d'Alene. They're, 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 uh, in my staff report, I believe I shared some data around the. Number of users who cross into Bonner County with boats. Last year was twenty-six thousand stopped at those checkpoints at the state lines and coming in from Canada. Um, we also account for Bonner County alone account, I, I think it's something like twenty percent of the boat registrations in the state of Idaho and Bonner County. Second only to Cootney County. So some, uh, over forty percent of the boat registrations in the state are between Bonner and, and Cootney County. So that's, that's a reason why Bonner County has been a historic, uh, recipient of this. We have not applied for these funds in over three years. And they came to us and said, why aren't you applying for these funds? We couldn't give away all this money last year because nobody from Bonner County asked for this money. Okay, so we have needs. We, we're excited to get back into the pool for these funds. Maeve has a little background on when we last applied for these funds that I'm sure she'll want to share with you and how they were used to improve our facilities here. We're gonna start with the RV park, actually.
And, uh, before you go, Maeve, I just want to emphasize to the council, this is all part of this focus on taking care of what we have. Um, not looking at new, large, you know, development facilities, but really repairing and maintaining what we have.
We'll skip through that one. That's just the objective here. Do you want to talk a little bit about our RV park, Maeve?
Sure, so, thank you, Jason. Um, we have an existing RV park down at, at City Beach that you're well aware of. There's currently twenty-one sites. Um, we, you can see that we have, um, it averages around a hundred thousand. Each year, uh, give or take depending on the year. This year, we only made seventy-nine thousand, but we were missing five spaces due to trees. And unsafe conditions. Um, so anyway, it's, um, the largest. Or the second largest revenue source for parks capital improvements, um, second to the mortgage fees. And this is a really great location for affordable access to downtown as well if you're visiting or if you have guests in town. This is a great place to offer for camping. Um, but we essentially inherited this site and, or. You know, my realm, I inherited it in twenty twenty-one and the most that we could do to it was what we had with the available funding that we had for maintenance and so. We improved some gravel and we made this map and we put some signs out there and we got it so you could essentially rent them and we made it functioning. But we didn't have any money for anything else. Um, several of the sites are not exactly level. There are some drainage problems. And, um, if you skip to the.
Oh, and squirrels chewed through the electrical cables this spring. We had to spend a few thousand dollars to.
Yes, so we've essentially been limping through the deferred maintenance since the beginning of operations. And it still has generated that much money. Um, so these are the existing conditions. And if you've ever walked around there, it's not exactly a place that you do want to send your family to go visit. It, it definitely needs some love. Um, and, you know, we've heard a lot of feedback over the last few years. And it's a very difficult place to manage. We don't have an existing camper host or host site, like a dedicated one. And that would really help with safety. It would help to have somebody down there. I know who doesn't want to move down there. Um, and, uh, just developing that site and then these are all the items that we'd like to do. So. Um, obviously improving the gravel where the camp sites are, but, um. Yeah, this is the planned upgrades. Um, but also making them ADA accessible, you know, you always hear that from me. So. Uh, also having a dedicated ADA accessible site, which we don't currently have one. At least one, and we may want more than that. We'd have to do some studying on how many would be appropriate. Um, and then also adding, uh, internet, upgrading the electrical systems to two hundred and forty volt. Because that's what a lot of RVs come with the, uh, the, they have their own air conditioning, but they have sleep apnea machines. And a lot of times those need to be plugged in. So if you think about who our clients are, um, they really need more power. Um, especially in the summer months when they're running additional, uh, additional electric. Um, we have problems with the drainage and also it's not particularly appealing from a landscaping perspective. The wayfinding is almost nonexistent and, um, we don't have a really strong connectivity for the public to be able to get to those docks. Let alone the people that are there. There's a fence on that south side. And so it's not really accessible to even go to the lakefront and it's not very welcoming. So, um, with this grant request, we would propose to do all of these improvements. Um, the majority of the design can be done in-house between myself and other staff members. Um, and then we would utilize engineers for the drainage and, um, some of the other, uh, calculations. Um, so we think that we could do this next year. Um, and I don't know, that's just the general. We don't have the exact amount that we'd be applying for yet. That's gonna come in the next few weeks as we do a deeper dive and, um, get the grant out the door. But, um, we do think that we can manage this. There is a five percent match that's requested and. Or required, sorry. And we definitely think we can match that with the funds that we have in hand. So, um, this is something that. Um, should I talk about the master plan?
Uh, let's hold up.
Okay. I'll tell you more in a minute.
Yeah, the, just why we're here tonight, the deadline for our IDPR grants is January twenty-seventh. So the next meeting is not till the fifteenth. If, and if we're gonna spend time working on this, we'd like their approval first. And so we have two agenda items. Actually, there's two grants. There're just gonna be two action items for you, so maybe I'll pause and ask if there's any questions about.
Take them one at a time.
Yeah.
Mister Mayor.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman, Councilwoman, roll.
Mine was more of a comment, um, and it's sort of related to the other parking piece. Um, I know that the RV park is. A significant moneymaker, as you just said. Um, why we wouldn't use this entire space and do away with. That small piece of parking there on the end and. I think that would be more of a financial benefit to the city than to have a small little parking lot here. When we have a huge City Beach parking lot. So just a comment.
It's something to consider for sure. Yeah, I think the, um, City Beach proper has around a hundred and seventy-two parking spaces. Um, this space right here is not maximized at all. Um, I will point out that the lift station that's being, um, upgraded right now, it's currently underground right, no, sorry. It's currently where that little house is. But it's, it's, it's unfortunately going to take up, I believe, six parking spaces when it's done. Cause it's gonna be rem- uh, moved over here and only these two, uh, westernmost parking spaces will remain. As there's gonna be landscaping and a fence around that new lift station. So that, that impacts what we can do. But certainly any improvements to the RV park, we would be maximizing the use of that space either for additional RV sites or for additional parking. Did you say a house?
The host.
Yes, the host.
That'd be a good space for the host.
Security and safety.
Any other questions about the RV fund grant?
Uh, just Mister Mayor, uh, if you would, one, one thing that I would have you consider, I've learned a lot about RV folks from two thousand and nine until now. Uh, the dumpster area here that's on the right hand in the middle of page, it's got two eight-yard dump. The dumpster area here that's on the right hand in the middle of page, it's got two eight-yard dumpsters, one for the hotel, one for the restaurant. It's got a holding area for barrels of spent oil as well. I believe it's got two drums that we would end up going through as well as a large cardboard recycling spot there that got picked up three to four times a week. One of the big things that we had is anybody who stayed relatively, you know, probably three to four days. Some of the things that we would find in the dumpsters, regardless of whether they had trash cans. We'd find boxes for 55-inch televisions. They're ordering stuff from Amazon if they're staying for any length of time, which also huge boxes that go right in the dumpsters as well, too. One of the most interesting things that I've found about that, even being so relatively close to the beach. They prefer sitting out under an awning in front of their RV, right? So the little bit of makeup that you put on this has the ability, I think, to attract some folks. When the best western was running it. They were actually booking out a year in advance. And the same families come every single year, lots of Canadians, lots of out-of-towners as well. And they typically dine out one to two times a day, as well as hit the shops during their trip. So please, please take a look at that dumpster area and see what you can do and potentially have its own dumpster site. Also, the wayfinding and the signage, I know you guys did a really good job on a very short time schedule to get QR codes up over there. I can't tell you with how many people came over to the restaurant at the host stand and said, where do I check in for the RV? And I would walk somebody at seven o'clock on Friday where I'm like biting my nails because I need to be in the restaurant and taking their phone and holding it up. So a little bit better wayfinding over there, which again, we're not talking about a very expensive fix to be able to do. And if you did get that host site, I think it would be amazing.
And I don't think in the future that the, the new hotel's waste will not be located on this site.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, and council, I know I don't vote, I don't mean to influence you, but I think, I'm amazed that this, this is the goose that lays the golden egg. Hats off to the previous administration for acquiring this property. This $100,000 that we're getting from a less than desirable RV park, I would not take my RV there. I'm just being honest. But the fact that we could get this, potentially get this grant to dress this up. What a way to ensure the solvency of our, our park system, Capital Improvement Fund in the future. And I hope you're also supportive and hope we get this grant.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
I agree, that's bad. And the fact that we do make money on that is awesome. I am, I'm excited about seeing that improved. I would like to see though, what you plan on doing before you send that in. Because like restrooms and showers, you talk about maintaining what we have. Our restroom at the beach is not adequate. If that could all be combined somehow, I'm, I'm not sure about showers. Wifi, if you give wifi, they will not be going to the coffee shops to use their internet. And that is a business, I think. People go to coffee shops and buy coffee. I think that'll make them more stay right there instead of go out into the public. I like the idea of fixing it, like I said, and utilizing it because it is pretty sad. I just, I'd like to see what it is before you send it in. Because some things I don't think are needed there, I guess, would be my comments. And what about the sewer hookups? And just, I'm just questioning, like, is that all going to be available with the wastewater treatment plant? I don't know any of these things, you know, I'm just, I don't, I don't like okaying something and not having any idea what it's really going to look like. Your grant.
Yeah, I think at this point, Councilwoman Duquette, this is just to give the approval for them to spend a few hours, well, more than a few hours time and energy preparing this.
Right.
And certainly you'll see a concept drawing. As with a lot of these grants, they're conceptual at first, and then you do the design with the funding. So happy to keep you informed and take any thoughts you have. Please send them their way and-
So will we see it before it gets sent in to give a final approval?
Yes, on the 15th of January, you'll probably have, you'll, let's see. Application, oh, this is for the application, sorry.
Cause this sounds like this is it.
Well, if you receive the grant, then you'll have to approve the reception of that, but-
Right, but that seems like a waste of time to go ahead and-
You know, I guess we have a meeting on the 8th. I'm not sure they'll have a concept ready by the 8th. We have a meeting on the 15th.
Is our meeting.
Again, I think they might be able to have something at least to, to get some more feedback from you on the 15th. We do have a Parks and Rec Commission who will be guiding them.
Approval tonight before we exert a lot of time and energy preparing any sort of concepts. But I'm more than happy to share our grant application with you before it's submitted at the end of January. And then, of course, if we're awarded the grant, you'd have to accept that grant award. And that would be sometime in May, probably late May, that we'd find out on the grant award. As far as what we might do between January and May, not much, because until we know whether we have the money. We don't want to spend much more resources on it. But once we got that money, we would do, do obviously a proper engineering and design before we do any construction.
Okay, and so you, you, you do this grant and you ask for these things?
No, we, we would just ask for money. Depending on how much money we got, we'd then truly scope out the, the work we do. These are all the, the want-to-haves, not the, we will-haves. It, it would depend on how much we could be awarded, how much, we have to look at our budget. We start the budgeting process in January here, so what, in the same time we're working on the, our grant application, we'll be looking at our Parks Capital Improvement Budget and say, how much of our 2026 capital improvement budget, budget do we want to put towards this project? Cause there's a lot of other needs in our parks as well. So we're unlikely to put, you know, $200,000 towards a match for this. Even though that higher match would help us in our grant scoring. And that's the thing, we don't know if we're going to get this grant. If we only put the minimum of 5%, we're going to score a little bit lower. So we got to ask like, how, how high do we want to commit? Can we put 100,000? You know, we have around 300,000 a year in our capital improvement fund. So we certainly aren't going to put all of it towards a match, even though that would increase our chances of getting this. So that, th- there's a lot of unknowns. We, we won't put, there won't be much in terms of a detailed design by the end of January. It'll be a a grant application with this photo in it. And possibly Maeve doing some Photoshop work on it to show what it could look like.
Yeah, it was real, real schematic.
Yeah. A little bit out of order, council, but I didn't realize this one was going to come first. This is actually number eight. I, I will now entertain a motion to approve this resolution directing staff to apply for a grant to the Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation Recreational Fund to support improvements to the RV park facilities at City Beach.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Spiro, second by Howard. Discussion?
I already was discussing.
All right, this will be a roll call vote.
Councilor Duquette?
I would say yes, if I get to see before it's, you can't do that.
Yes or no?
I, I just want to, I want some input on what actually goes in here.
And we have a Parks and Rec Commission, I would remind you that.
I know, I watched that. I actually watched that meeting the other day.
Cable is whether or not to approve the application.
I understand that, fine. Yes.
Councilor Dick?
Yes.
Councilor Schreiber?
Yes.
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Councilor Sprow?
Yes, thank you, yes.
Councilor Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you. Next staff seeks council support regarding a Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation Waterways Improvement for City Beach Parking Lot and Dock Improvements.
And I apologize for going out of order, Mr. Mayor. The tyranny of the PowerPoint. So as you saw, when the agenda was posted last Thursday, this was the original proposal. We had presented this proposal to the Parks Commission last week. We then on the Friday received this estimate, which was quite detailed. And I almost quit my job and bought a barge because 26 weeks of barge rental is 1.2 million dollars a per. I assume that includes the, the crew that's going to work that barge, but still it seems like we're all in the wrong industry. Yeah, so thi- this is a, obviously a ambitious project. When I brought this to the Waterways Improvement Fund Committee on Monday morning. They pointed out to me that five or six years ago, there was an effort to do something just like this and it was also kind of kicked down the road. So the, the, the background here is, this was not Maeve or I who were like, hey, let's dredge a mile of, you know, sediment out to allow winter access for boaters. This was our state representative, Mark Souter, as I explained in the staff report. He approached the mayor. The mayor came to me, I said, sure, let's look into it. So there, there's a lot of good reasons to do a project like this. The lake levels are likely to be lower for longer for the next 10 years due to the failures of the Albinie Falls Dam. Long story short, it's not within the scope of what's even reasonable for the Waterways Improvement Fund. There's only between 1.2 and 1.6 million dollars in there, meaning the max we could possibly hope to get is probably around three quarters of a million dollars from that fund, which would take us six years of maxing out the Bonner County allocation to do this mile of dredging. I, I was told by C Kramer that if we were to scale this back and if we only had to do a thousand foot or 2,000 feet of dredging, it would be, you know, a proportion of that total amount. But given that a large amount of this is like mobilization costs, we're still in nothing, in no scenario would have fallen under a million dollars to do this dredging work.
Plus it fills back in.
Plus, the question came up, this is why a full feasibility study is needed. What is the actual composition of that sediment? Will it just cave back in on itself if it's dredged? I don't want to be the guy who spends millions of public resources to find that out right now. Until we have a better engineering understanding of that project. So there are plenty of other good things we can do with the Waterways Improvement Fund. Which include, th- 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 these are, these are basically the things you can do with Waterways Improvement Fund. Improvements to access or parking facilities, restroom facilities, mortgage facilities, anything that supports motorized boating in the state of Idaho. So one of those projects that we've for a long time been visioning out of the city is improvements to the docks at the City Beach Marina. So the proposal is to, basically over two years, and this is, there's precedent for this. I think it was two or three years that we got with grants to do the parking and the docks at Memorial Field. So the parking and the docks at Memorial Field were paid for with Waterways Improvement Funds. And that, that was the last time we received that. That was two or three years that we've sketched.
Years ago, we received it for three years in a row.
Yeah. So we basically want to take the success that we saw at Memorial Field with rebuilding the, the, the parking lot. redoing the docks there and replicate that at City Beach. So we've had lots of concepts for dock improvements in City Beach over the years. I know there, there are members of the public who have serious concerns about some of these proposals. How would that work in the lower right-hand corner? If you put docks out the middle of the channel, the boats are all going to run, run aground. So we're not proposing just building docks into the middle of the channel. We want to use Waterways Improvement Funds to do a proper engineering design for what kind of docks, dock improvements can be done there to replace these aging docks that are in very poor shape. And, and hopefully provide a whole lot more docks because as you've heard, mortgage is our number one revenue earner in the Parks Department. And there's also a long waiting list for boat slips among city residents who don't, who don't get that, you know, lucky lottery draw every year when one or two slips opens up. So, so this is something we, we'd like to pursue. We've done it recently, just two, three years ago at Memorial Field successfully. And for, for phasing, we're looking at probably doing the docks first in 2025, allocating the, the 2025 funds to, to, to look at dock improvements with the plan of looking towards the parking lot for 2026. And part of that is the the ability for us to provide matching funds for the parking lot depends on the hotel pulling building permits and providing us with that $400,000 in lieu payment, which we could put towards a match for parking lot improvements. And we just know that match isn't going to be ready by January when these grants are due. So I'll, I'll just skip through some slides here and you'll see some of the rationale behind this. I talked to, again, Austin, our Parks Maintenance Manager, who's been at the city for 27 years. And he has no recollection of the City Beach Parking Lot having been repaved in his time in the city. So it's, it's, it's been, there's literally hundreds of patches. A story I've told, which is absolutely true. Amanda Wilson was a Public Works Director. I was on city council. I rode my bike to City Beach and I saw somebody pulling a boat trailer out, go into a pothole and the axle was ripped off the trailer. And the guy came out and was losing his mind. I immediately texted Amanda, Amanda, we need to fix this parking lot. Well, there was no money then, and there's no money now, so we're going for the money to do that in the next year or two. Sorry, Maeve. And yes, I did take a drone to City Beach last week to get these photos. It was quite fun. This is just a, a possible timeline. This is going to be a several-year project. We're looking at-
Multiple phases, correct. Multiple phases. And then I think it's really important to emphasize repairing and replacing what we have. Because we, what we have right now, we're, we're holding it together, you know, but it's they're wood docks and they're falling apart. So really looking at that and optimizing it is what we're hoping to do and take better care of what we already have.
And of course, there's lots of permitting that's involved with any work in the, in the waterways. So we've, we've put into this Maeve suggested, except the cost of that permit, we're looking at about $7,000 in permits just to do any dock work in the, in the waterway. But we've, Maeve, Maeve saw this project through at Memorial Field and she's got experience working with this particular grant.
Yeah, and just to give you a quick backstory on that, we allocated 450,000 for the water, or for the War Memorial Field docks. I was able to redesign it based on my experience with docks and I came in at 325,000 under budget and delivered it in my, what, my first year here, I think it was. It was one of my first projects. So I think that, you know, what I bring to the table for this is the experience of that, but something that was kind of unique to the city at the time was that was our first design-build contract. And I think this would be a great model for running it. Or should I say, procuring it through the design-build model because we wouldn't have to pay the upfront cost for a fully engineered design. We could just get a substantial design so that we would be able to have accurate cost estimating. And then from there, we can do the design build and, and defer the engineering costs to the builder, which will result in a lower overall cost for the project delivery.
Thanks.
I have heard feedback from council members that you often appreciate these kind of pros and cons things. So I did put a slide up here, just some kind of risks and unknowns. There's, you, you saw us actually several previous concepts in an earlier slide, right? There, there have been proposals just in the last five years to completely change City Beach, right? The, the, when the RV park was acquired through the land swap. It was based on the 2020 Parks Master Plan, which envisioned completely moving the boat launch to that location. I don't know if the previous administration anticipated that becoming such a, an in-demand amenity. Also, we just, if you look at our Parks Master Plan and you look at our Downtown Design Report, which was accepted earlier this year, I think. Those proposals are quite frankly, like 50 to 100 million dollar proposals.
More. The, sorry, but I have to say, because I was tasked with the feasibility of it. When I was brought on in 2021, I was tasked with getting accurate cost estimating. In 2021, it was 150,000 for the 2020 plan, million, sorry, 150 million for the 2020 plan to be implemented. And that was then. And you can imagine three years later, tack on at least 30 to 40% plus a, a new design. Plus, where the boat launch was said to be and is identified in the 2020 Master Plan, which, that's where the RV park is. It would require studying of the dredging, which we just talked about of how unrealistic and unfeasible that is. And then we run the risks.
Plus, I can't imagine like boats getting put in right at the bridge. If you've ever been down there, it's already a lot of conflict, not a good location.
Not, not a very wide channel. So, you know, you could pretty much rule that out, which they did during the design report. However, the design report, similar to any other master plan, needs further vetting. And in the design report, they identified additional docks, a whole second row of additional docks that would go out into the channel. And so you can see where this is going. Without accurate design and assessment. A lot of those are still very high-level schematic plans. So again, going back to what the mayor has told us, the priority is critical infrastructure, taking better care of what we have, taking care of things that, you know, need to be upgraded. And so when we look at that with the docks and the RV park, that's what we're looking at doing. And also, I, I always am going to say this one more time, there's currently no ADA access to the boat docks there. And that would be a great place to overlap the dock improvements along with the RV park and, you know, this phase plan of upgrading that whole area and just simple things that we could do. Even making it more appealing for picnic, just to be able to go out there and enjoy the space, you know. So anyway, you can see how we can just improve what's there and maybe better with these grant opportunities. And of course, you would see the designs as they get, as they evolve.
One, one thing to point out though, is if we are awarded the RV fund grant, we would, through the Parks Commission, recommend amending the Parks Master Plan to actually leave the RV park in that. We do want to make sure we're following what's in our community master plans. So it would require reopening that 2020 Parks Master Plan to insert a vision of an RV park in that location. So just reiterating the philosophy of maintaining what we have, the proposal here would be to not really change anything at City Beach. Just improve what's there. Maximize the community's benefit and, and hopefully increase- And and hopefully increase revenue into the Parks Capital Improvement Fund by. Uh expanding some of the docks and and investing in the RV park, the two largest sources of revenue for parks projects in the city. So that's that's it. We're just asking for your approval of these two grants tonight. I think you've already approved one. Take any questions about the with grant.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember, uh Councilwoman um Schreber, sorry, it's getting late.
Uh first off, thanks for your work on all this. I, you know, in a era of tighter budgets, I really appreciate you guys going out for grant funding. For projects that we otherwise couldn't fund um. The one concern I have about this parking lot project is that. My understanding is that the road base underneath that parking lot is problematic, and so it's not just a simple repave and restripe project. Is, you're nodding like you've already taken this into consideration. Okay, I just wanted to point that out.
Completely failed subbase, and I would argue based on what I've seen. Other parking projects around here, and I'm sure Holly could probably speak to this better than I can. Um historically, the as- the asphalt wasn't necessarily built on a structural fill. The engineering standards have vastly improved over the last thirty years, as you can imagine, and so similar to any other pa- paving project. We would have to remove and replace most of it, but not all of it. Uh you know, and when you look at a paving project, you try to save. As much as you can to make it as cost effective as possible, so really it's the areas that we have the horizontal cracking. Um or the lateral cracking, typically when it's horizontal, if it's adjacent to a tree, that's often a tree root. So in the case where we might have trees within proximity, we probably can take care of that pretty simply. When you see a lateral crack down asphalt, that is indicative of failed soil. And so that usually results in a two to three foot dig out section and, you know, lifting it with an engineer. Um in addition, out here because the water table is so low, we have drainage problems, so. Um there is some pretty substantial storm drains just to the set to the, I guess, if you're looking at the picture, it's on the right, it's in between the RV park and the parking lot. Um on the east side of the park, west side of the parking lot, sorry, a little turned around. But anyway, um I think we can look at that system a little bit better and uh make it more efficient and functional.
Perfect, thank you.
And council members, I I I see this parking lot, and I know from my experience, I've seen upwards of sixty percent of Kootenay and. Spokane County and Canadian residents parking there for free, putting their trash in our and and our receptibles, obviously shopping downtown. But I mean, if you do a modest, you know, fifty percent of those spots at ten bucks a day with some turnover. I mean, this 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 could be the, you know, sustainable enduring solution to make sure that. We always have money to take care of what we have at City Beach. Um with this paid parking concept that we'll bring you more information on. Um to that point, uh staff, I just have a question. Is there anything you know about requirements? Do we take this money? Is there a proportion of these dollars that have to be dedicated to trailer parking? Well, do you know anything about that yet, or is that something we're gonna have to investigate?
That's a good question.
I don't believe so. I think it just has to, the facility, the parking facility has to serve.
Gotcha.
The.
I E. The ramp.
Right, right. I thi- I know from War Memorial Field, we had it there and it funded that parking lot. I don't believe, I think that the the quantity of trailer parking was based on the capacity of the the boat launch and.
Great.
And that kind of stuff.
Keep that in mind as you go. I'd love to know.
Mister Mayor, if I might.
Council President.
Um my comment would be that I would hope that we could use some of the pavement funds to improve the trail around City Beach. And I would say that because we have an area that's designed for boats to pull up there. Um that directly accesses that path and walkway that um we could legitimately do that. Um it is also deteriorating, so if there's any hope.
Yeah, actually, um one thing that we're not, we're not there yet, because as you know, I'm just coming off Travers, barely. I'm still in it, and um this opportunity came up, but Jason and I have been working on. Um assessing all of the parks with the Park and Rec Commission, and we're gonna be doing that coming forth in January and into February. Where we're looking at all the parks, particularly projects like that. And so to speak to what you're saying. Those kind of projects where we're doing infrastructure improvements of something that's already there. And we would already have mobilized a team, a crew, it is so cost effective when you can do it all the same. Similar to Travers, like when I repaved that, you know, the portion around parking stuff. Anytime you can piggyback an existing contractor, you're gonna realize savings. So and that's something that, you know, by the time we come to do this in twenty twenty six, we certainly can budget for it out of our other funds. If we don't have the funds, so um yeah, I think that's, you're on, you're on par with that, and if any of you. Um see other suggestions, certainly don't hesitate to send me a list. Hey, we saw this and you're gonna be working here. What else can you do?
Council members, if there's no other questions, I'd entertain.
Mister Mayor, real quick, I will be really quick. Um again, I don't like not seeing what your ideas are. You were worried about the low water years and extending docks. Um three things. Are you ever thinking of charging for launching? Is that something that would be in that? Any idea for non-motorized while you're doing this? Cause that's been in the plan.
Yeah, actually, that's why I mentioned the non-motorized, cause just this week when we were, before I went to the with meeting, I contacted the grant administrator down in Boise for this grant. And I want a clarification of whether with funds could be put towards non-motorized boat launches, and she said, no.
Ah.
They, not unless it's part of a motorized boat launch project, but we have concepts for non-motorized boat launches over on Sand Creek. And there is the recreational trail program, which can be used for water trail access points. So I I just didn't think that was gonna, I I didn't want to spring that on you guys on Monday this week. And I don't think we're gonna apply for that this year, but definitely in in future, the RTP grants, which you can get in a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. Could be put towards improving non-motorized uh launches, and we do have a concept for that in our Parks Master Plan.
Okay, and then um it's been brought to my attention that another invasive species checkpoint would be a good idea at the beach. I'm not sure if that's part of that grant funding.
No, but I will speak to that as the, I am the invasive species or I I'm the noxious weed coordinator as well. I'm not quite sure what you would call it, but one of my duties, um that is something that we're gonna be working on this winter with Chase. Um who's the county representative and we'll be looking at at all of those opportunities, so. That's all.
Thanks, Councilwoman Duquette. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing a grant application to the Idaho Parks and Recreation Waterways Improvement Fund for City Beach Parking Lot and Dock. Uh parking lot and dock improvements.
Second.
Uh moved by Council President Rule, second by Espiro, so it'll be a roll call vote.
Mister Mayor. Could I just ask one question really quickly?
Um. Point of order, I don't wanna get on the bad side of council members. There's been a motion and a second uh council.
There's deliberation after a motion.
There is, yeah, there can be, yes. Um is uh.
Is there any deliberation?
Yes, just one question, please. We are not approving paid parking at City Beach right now. We are simply approving what's on, okay, that's all I wanted to clarify.
Yes, no, that will have to come to you.
Thank you.
Um this will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Spurrel?
Yes.
Counselor Schreber?
Yes.
Counselor Duquette?
Yes.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Mister Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Kirk. Um we will now proceed with a staff presentation on our zoning code and possible updates for the coming year. I will yield the floor to. By great honor, yield the floor to Senior City Planner Bill Dean, and just for the context, I have worked in. Planning and zoning and land use for more than twenty years, and I am so thrilled that Bill is here. He is. Adamantly capable and exceptionally talented, so with that, he has now had several months to digest our code. And um I think this is his first presentation to you, so you're about to enjoy a um. A mind of planning.
Great. And and I'm gonna move into my role as IT support guide for Bill.
Thank you. Council, um for the record, my name is Bill Dean. I'm the city planner. It's a, it's a real pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you for setting aside some. Time to hear my initial um observations on your zoning ordinance. I know you've seen a lot of um PowerPoints uh tonight, so I'll. Uh just, I just have ten slides to get through my uh my observations I want to share with you. Want to thank the planning commission last night for uh engaging in a in a great discussion for about an hour, hour and a half. Uh we talked through this very same presentation last night, um and I thought that was very engaging and and uh in fruitful, just uh the back and forth we had. Also want to thank our our attorneys and Jason and also uh the mayor. I shared a lot of these ideas with um the legal team and everybody uh on staff. Uh in terms of what I what I've seen. First of all, congratulations on your comp plan and uh all the master planning work you've done when I came into this job. Um I wasn't sure, my, oh my gosh, do I have to do updated comp plan or not, and it turns out uh thankfully, I think it's a very few days after I first started, you had adopted one. Uh you know, it was a kind of a sigh of relief. Um and then I opened the zoning ordinance, and um during the first week, I said, oh boy. Um I think we have some work ahead of us um to to update this code. So um I've been in this seat now for five months, uh this week, I think it's five months. Had a great time, and let me just share with you what I what I've seen so far in terms of what I see in the code. This is not a complete and total summary of everything, but it certainly is uh a good start. So I have four initial observations, and I'm gonna spend most of the time on the first one, but basically. Coming, coming here, the ver- the very first thing I I did was literally day one, open the code, and I wanted to understand what the. Uh discretionary permit structure was like in the city. I want to understand how a development gets approved. Um and I kept page turning and page turning, and I realized, wow, we've we've got some tightening up to do here because there's some, there's some gaps. Um so my first, my first observation is that we can strengthen the deliberate decision making in the development permitting. Um by using some things you already have in your code, but tightening them and strengthening them and and focusing on them. So I'm gonna spend a little bit of time talking about that. Um I also think we can simplify and modernize the code. Um like every city that that puts a code in place many, many years ago, it gets amended from time to time. And then all of a sudden you wake up one day and it's it's kind of complicated, and there's there's really ways to simplify that, so I want to talk a little bit about that tonight as well. Um I think there's a great foundation in your code um related to objective development standards. Um there are these great categories that lead to outcomes in the built environment, and. Yes, some of these, some of these standards conflict with one another, but you have a great foundation there. You're actually asking developers to pay attention to things that a lot of cities don't. Um whether that has to do with how you landscape a parking lot or how you situated um a building on a lot, there are great categories. You just have some conflicting standards. It makes it difficult to figure out really what we're after. And then I want to talk a little bit about, or one observation is just affirming the opportunities for small lot development. Um in the, in what I've learned, by looking at this, there's a lot of energy that goes into. Um small lot development by virtue of being able to do this with PUD or substandard, substandard lots of record. Um I looked at the RM zone, there's two thousand five hundred and nineteen lots, I think roughly, that are in the RM zone. And a hundred and seventy nine or so of those are substandard, so there's a lot of um. Uh opportunity for small lot development, and a lot of developers want to do that, a lot of homeowners come in, prospective developers coming in and asking for our input on that. And we have to point them in the direction of having a substandard lot or using this PUD process, which is kind of a complicated tool to achieve that, so. Um maybe there's an opportunity to look at another tool in the toolbox, so that's one thing that's kind of jumped out at me, is there's all this energy for this, but there's really. You've limited yourself to these two tools, so um let's jump into it. So when I have these conversations with with city councils and and city managers and planning commissions and staff and developers about how in. And training staff, how the development process works, it's very much a process, and I like to use this. Um this pyramid to explain how development actually occurs, cause it doesn't just spring out of the ground. It doesn't matter if you're in. Maine or Vermont or, you know, Ohio or California or 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 here. Uh you you have a foundation and you and you, and basically it's a foundation is your in your comprehensive plan. Very master plan your community might have, your zoning ordinance and your design guidelines, your policy documents, very aspirational, they're looking to the future, what you would like to achieve. And then you have this critical piece in the middle where you're taking discretionary actions on permits and subdivision plats. Uh and it's really important that uh as part of that discretionary piece, the the community and affected property owners. Uh and developers themselves, the applicants are are apprised of their full, their full due process rights. That's very important as you're as you're considering uh approving development. And it's and it's at the very last stages where you're doing your building safety checks for the building permits. And doing the, going through the compliance process to make sure that the the structure is actually, you know, constructed in accordance with the code. Nothing ever just springs out of the ground. It's always in furtherance of the policies. That we create in the zoning that we put in place, and that's been going on for uh long before we've even had zoning. This is a reflection of of what we value as a society, and you and you have just spoken with your comp plan about what that means. When this is done well, it's clear, it's transparent, and it's predictable. And that's important for all kinds of um things, not only for if you're a homeowner trying to do a kitchen remodel on a basic, uh you know, getting a building permit. Or if you're a developer trying to bring some affordable housing, or you're 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 as a city team trying to elicit a response from a prospective employer. Uh who doesn't want to get surprised at the end with uh requirements that are are hidden or just known by a staff member or come up late because your process is is confusing. Um so altogether, this is what the, this is why the good pyramid looks like, and I'm gonna be referring to this over and over and over again. You know, as the weeks and months and years uh progress, because it doesn't change, doesn't matter what city you're in, this is how it works um across our country. Um what I've noticed in Sandpoint. And this is sort of a competition with with Brandon's uh drawing his hand drawn uh diagram, and this one, we're gonna have a. Competition later to see who's who gets the most points for the diff- most difficult to understand hand drawn image, but. This is my attempt. This is what I see when I, when I look at your pyramid. This is the day one when I walked in, I said, where is this discretionary permit? I have to understand that. That's the linchpin to so much into development decisions, that linkage between your comp plan and your building permits. Um and what what I see here is you've got this inflated sense of activity at the top. A lot of things get crammed in at this last stage of the building permit phase. Um we have some provisions in the code to talk about um discretionary actions. Is one, it's it's actually in section nine one four of your code, it's called the the site plan review permit. Um it's it's uh it's there in black and white, it's 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 it exists, but it's uh hasn't really been followed regularly. And I've chased permits back uh going now over twenty years and seeing examples where, you know, many, many years ago, this process was followed. And then there's a drop off that I've seen recently in just uh that process being completed. It may be logged in the system. But the due process component to that weren't fully uh used. And it's created um some confusion in terms of what's actually required to develop and hooking and hanging a lot of things on in the later stages. Um that really should be relegated toward building code compliance. And this is um a very significant observation. Um this, this is one they did as as a planner. That's trying to help a community take its comp plan and and move it forward in terms of how the built environment actually looks and feels at the end of development. This one has me concerned, and I think we, this is the area where I think we need to do some um pretty immediate work to just shore this up. Have some findings written into the into the code and tighten up what it really means to um. Uh include due process more fully uh in your in your development permitting. Um and I and I think a good portion of that is that the base document here in your in your zoning ordinance, it should um be tuned up. How can we be more deliberate? A a typical development timeframe, it starts in furtherance of this sort of this topic and idea, the typical development timeframe. Um the timeline looks something like you see at the top, you file an application, there is a notice to property, there's this compliance review done. Uh you know, the city will commission technical studies occasionally for may, whether it's storm drainage or sewer or water, like we heard earlier today. Um or or transportation, and then you have this discretionary action, whether that's a plat or whether it's a site plan permit. And the site plan permit is the one that's got me most concerned. Um and then there's an appeal process, which is important, whether you're the applicant. Or whether you're an affected party, maybe a resident nearby, um the applicant in the sense that, hey, I don't think the conditions of approval were appropriate, or. Um I think you reached the wrong action, whether that was for approval or denial. Um or whether you're a resident that thinks, oh my, I I can bring something that you may not have considered to make this project better. And therefore, I think I I want, I want to file an appeal to see if I can improve this, or uh bring evidence to suggest that maybe the the different outcomes should should be more appropriate. Um and then if, of course, once you get through that, if it's approved, you go on to the building permit phase, and that's really should be relegated to compliance with building code. At that stage in the process, we should not be talking about whether or not a turn lane is required for um. Uh multifamily development, or if a sewer line needs to get extended uh to make the development work. But what I see here in the observed timeline is that we have what I call these cherry bombs at the end, where these are the. It's later in the process that we see these things coming up, and it's entirely avoidable. Um and it and it's an, it's avoidable by using. And it's, and it's, it's avoidable by using the, the tools you already have in your code, but just strengthening them. And that's, and that's what I want to spend some time doing this next few months is, is bring forward an ordinance for your consideration of working with the planning commission to, to kind of shore some of that up. Cause right now what I see is we get to the discretionary permit process, but it really just gets folded into the building permit. And now we've, now we're conditioning this building permit to do a lot of things that should have been conditioned at a discretionary permit where everybody has the ability to understand that neighbor's developer, such that they could appeal or weigh in on that decision. And I've seen it go as late as, is causing issues with certificates of occupancy. This is an entirely avoidable situation. We just need to put a lot of energy into, into tuning it up. And again, I want to be clear, I'm not talking about adding processor steps or bureaucracy or, or importing ideas from, from elsewhere. This is just what's in your code now needs to be, needs to be reinforced and fixed. So these three things here, I think in this first observation are, are my biggest concerns. Working with the attorneys and the planning commission and Jason, I'd like to reinforce what the site plan review process looks like. I've had some fantastic conversations with, with, with Brandon about this and with Jason and what this really can mean. Another thing I did was on point number two here is I took a look at your comp plan. And I just wanted, just a quick read, I said, let's, let me just find out how often context sensitivity comes up, comes to play and what this community is expecting for its development outcomes. And it comes up a lot. And what I, what I think we can do is enhance this, this critical permit that you have, this site plan review permit. Probably something I want to relabel and suggest we call it something like a development permit to make it very clear that it's distinct. And I want to, I want to make sure that we're focusing on this, this idea of context sensitive development. That's really the connection between your comp plan and your building permits. When you have this permit and for, let me give you an example. This, this permit, this is the same permit that would be used to approve a project out by the airport as it would be down on Cedar and second or first downtown. It's the same permit and a building gets, you know, a development gets applied for. And you want to have the ability and the city does have the ability, if we write the findings correctly in the code, that you can, you can observe what's being submitted and weigh in on the, the appropriateness of that development, given the context that it's situated in. You may have a metal building, for example, that gets dumped in the middle of a lot in downtown. That would be perfectly suitable for the airport, but not downtown and vice versa. And this is the permit, if we write the findings correctly, that enables us to make that connection stronger. Those same findings should include consideration for utilities, for transportation infrastructure more strongly. Not that we don't do these things, let's just strengthen it. So it's very clear and it's written down that that's actually what we're looking at. We're not going to move on to building permit until we know we can serve it. We know that the transportation infrastructure is there and we've mitigated it appropriately. And also that the building itself is befitting for its surroundings. That doesn't mean that every single code standard you have is a by right standard. I know this, this may be a shock, but there's actually some discretion that can be used adjusting building heights, given the proximity of where the, the proposal is. If we do a better job of defining that and connecting what you say in your comp plan to the findings in your code, and, and right now that's missing. And my, my last point on this, and we'll move on to the other points, is that just strength, along the way, we're going to be strengthening the procedural due process clarity. We want to make it very clear when an application is filed. We've, we're starting to revamp our website for that. Being very adamant about giving, do, you know, appropriate notice to the community members and affected parties nearby. In a site plan context, it's actually two steps. One, when the application is filed, heads up, there's been something filed. And then secondly, after an action is taken, heads up, there's an opportunity for appeal. I'm even thinking about the, the way the appeal, the way the approval is actually issued altogether or the denial and whether or not we want to have that done at a, at a, at a hearing, actually at city hall, an administrative hearing. Just to, just to further strengthen the commitment to transparency and clarity and predictability, which I think is imperative in your, in your development process for, for all parties, everybody. So that's my, that's my first observation. Number two, let's use some tables. Let's, let's clarify these development standards. It took me an hour and a half, one day to figure out what the setbacks were for a garage and a corner lot in South Sandpoint. And I've been reading a lot of codes for a long time, took me an hour and a half. And the next day I had to come back, it's been another hour. And I finally figured out what the answer was. And we wrote this, this table, we've been working for months on this table that we've, that we've created. And so I want to, I want to import these tables into the, into the code. And this is natural, happens with a lot of codes. You, you develop these standards over time, new ideas come in, next thing you've got some conflicting standards. I want to clarify where the regulations are in the code and collapse it into a more understandable format. For example, you can read the definitions portion of a code and then there will be a development standard and sometimes even a process. That needs to be taken apart and put definitions where they belong, development standards where they belong, in administration where it belongs. So it's very clear what you're doing. Right now, just when you get through the code and you think you understand what the process might be, you find your way to another part of the code that says, actually, there's an alternate process you should be following. And the same with the standards. This is what the standard is, except there's an exception and then a carve out and then another standard. And sometimes they conflict. And that is natural, that happens with codes over time. It's time for us to collapse this stuff, clarify it and use tables and other tools to make it easier to follow. And then like I mentioned earlier, I like to leverage the foundation that we have of these objective development standards. Whether we like the cottage development or not, as, as a community. What's interesting about that particular portion of the ordinance is that it's, it got a lot of very specific objective standards in it. Those are good to have. So let's, let's, let's reflect on those, let's clarify where there's some confusion. And then if we're going to add some new standards, let's do it in a way that's a commensurate with that level of clarity. And, and so again, you have a predictable code. If you follow these rules, you get to have a predictable outcome. And then lastly, and I appreciate you enduring these, these slides. Right now you have to do a PUD or have a, a sub, substandard lot of record in order to achieve a, a small lot development. What I mean by that is what the code establishes is a, is a 5,000 square feet. Yet we've got hundreds of these lots and development proposals all the time coming in for small lot, single family development. So I thought, gosh, is there another tool that this council and this community might want to investigate? I think I'm certainly not ready to suggest that's what we need. But I think what I see in the code and in the, in just the communication and some of the staff work I've looked at, I think it's worth a conversation at least to see if there's another opportunity to expand the zoning districts to include some other tools that you might have. So with that, I just want to, again, thank you for, this is, this is a humbling experience for me. This is a very special place. And I, and I, I think anybody recognizes that driving through it. If you're fortunate enough to actually spend some time here and get to know people and talk with commissions and business owners and residents alike, you, you, you double down on that sentiment. And that's very much how I feel, working with everybody at city hall and everybody I've run into. It's been very welcoming and, and eager to see what we can do with this new comp plan. My next steps are very, very clear. I'm going to continue to, to help train Katie Keeney, our new assistant planner. Krista Lester, our planning tech, work with Jason and Brandon very closely in just developing these systems. We have just great daily dialogue about what all these things mean. Right now, we, we, we do have a focus on getting through our workload. It's a, it's a high permit workload and getting the right answer is difficult. And it's important that we do so, so we're not creating chaos for our applicants. It takes a lot of, a lot of effort to give the right answer. Not because it's necessarily difficult work, it's just that the, the codes are confusing. I'd like to begin with section nine, one, four, which is your site plan permit process. That's where it resides. And, and one reason why is because it directly relates to what I heard through Mayor Grimm and Jason, with the number one council priority for zoning was to take a look at the downtown and historic overlay and things like that. Context sensitivity, if we do this right with findings, is going to place less of a burden on having to have specific design standards for every part of the city. You, you'll be able to, in the, in the zone district itself for downtown, which already speaks to it being the heart of the city and historical character. If we create the crate linkages just with this permit alone, you'll have leverage when you're evaluating a permit to see how this permit relates to what the purpose of the zone district is. And we can do that with findings and tightening nine, one, four. That doesn't mean we shouldn't evaluate fully what this existing standards are or think about design guidelines and historic overlays as well. But we can take immediate steps now that can better further our ability to implement this comp plan if we, if we, if we jump on this. So again, I appreciate the conversations I've had with, with legal counsel on this. I think we've done a little bit of a, a shallow swim, kind of a sort of a deep dive on, on what it means for, for due process and what's going on just in the, in the state with some litigation on, on this very issue. So I think those are my initial observations and I'm very much looking forward to your questions and working with you to implement your vision for this community. So thank you so much for your time.
Bill, thank you so much. I feel just so grateful that, that you found this place and that we found you. Cause with you and the legal team, this is exactly what we need. So thank you. And counsel, just for your own awareness, as Bill's laid out, they're very busy doing current permitting, current planning. I will be working with staff on next year's budget to look for more resources in the planning department. So we can free Bill up from being chained to the desks, approving permits to actually really throwing some gas on this, this work. So just a heads up there, but thanks again, Bill.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
Quick comment, Bill, thank you for diving in and looking at that. One of the frustrations I constantly hear from architects, builders and landowners, how difficult it is to build in Sandpoint. And so everything you're saying should make it much easier, more transparent. So thank you for diving in. I'm sure the citizens of Sandpoint will be the beneficiaries, so thank you.
You're welcome. I would attest to that, having had, previously had many clients in Sandpoint. Thank you. So exciting news for the final item on our agenda this evening. I am honored, pleased and just grateful that Holly Ellis has accepted our, our offer for our new public works director, become our new public works director. I'm excited for a couple of reasons. One, this builds out and completes the complete transition to a department head led city. Two, as you all know, we've searched for a while and it became more and more apparent that we had a a very capable individual at city hall in Holly, who has integrity, respected by her peers, is conscientious and has a performance record that is impeccable. So without much further ado, I would greatly appreciate and entertain a motion for the council to confirm the appointment of Holly Ellis as City of Sandpoint Public Works Director effective December 16th, 2024.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
I just have one question before we vote on this. Does Ms. Ellis hold a professional engineering license?
Thank you, Councilman Schreiber. She does not. She has completed her EIT in the Seattle region. One of the conditions of the offer is that she secures that PE license within a year. And, and it's a good point. One of the reasons I am most grateful for Holly's application is she told me frankly, I'm not sure I'm ready for this job. She acknowledges that she's going to learn and grow a lot, but I confirmed with her that we will both mentor and support her with outside consultants. If there's any expertise that she doesn't have the ability or the confidence or, you know, feel comfortable working with. So for the first couple of years, this is going to be a position that Holly will grow into. But she's here locally. She's committed to this community and she knows what, everything we're, we're facing, fully transparent. So she will get that PE. That's a condition of the offer and we will support and grow her along this way.
I appreciate that. Yeah, it's my understanding that you need to work underneath a professional engineer for, I think, four years before you can apply to take the exam. And then so my concern was that if we put her in the supervisory position, that she wouldn't have anybody above her that would make her eligible. So and I'm glad to hear that you've addressed that issue and that you're working on plan so that she can grow in her career and not have to leave Sandpoint in order to get that license.
That's right. And it's my understanding, she just needs to start studying a little bit, well, learn a little bit and take the exam. But she's met all the other qualifications. And I just, I also love the, the, the fact that this is an internal promotion and opportunity and hopefully a signal to anyone that a job at the city of Sandpoint is not a dead end job, that there are opportunities here. And selfishly, you get what you pay for, but I'm really excited to offload my, my attempt to be the public works director to someone with much greater capability. So thank you, Holly.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Council President Rule, second by Councilman Spiro. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilor Rule.
Congratulations, yes.
Councilor Sprow.
Yes.
Councilor Dick.
Yes.
Councilor Schreiber.
Yes.
Councilor Duquette.
Yes, I have no qualms about this.
Councilor Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we adjourn, Holly, our new public works director will take the oath of office. Holly, if you would please come to the podium. I'd also like to call central service director Cheryl Hughes, community planning development director Jason Welker to the podium. Council will recently confirm their appointments and I'd like to ask them to publicly take their oath of office at this time as well. Holly, please raise your right hand. Do you, Holly Ellis solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho and the laws of the city of Sandpoint, and that you will, to the best of your ability, faithfully perform these duties of the Office of Public Works Director for the City of Sandpoint in Bonner County, Idaho?
I will.
Congratulations. Official. You do that and you get that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next.
Jason.
Jason's next. Raise your right hand, Jason Welker. Do you, Jason Welker solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho and the laws of the city of Sandpoint, and that you will, to the best of your ability, faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Community Planner, Planning and Development Director of the City of Sandpoint in Bonner County, Idaho?
I do.
Excellent, congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Go. Last, but definitely one. Right hand.
It's a long day.
Do you, Cheryl Hughes solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho and the laws of the city of Sandpoint, and that you will, to the best of your ability, faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Central Service Director, the City of Sandpoint, Bonner County, Idaho? With that, counsel, I thank you all for giving me great Christmas present. That's awesome. I would, with no further business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 9:12 PM.